All right, good evening, everyone. Calling to order, SAC City Unified School District Board of Education.
Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Broadcasting.
This meeting of the Sacramento City Unified is recorded. Cablecast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs and DirecTV Universe Cable System. The recording will also be streamed and video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Wednesday, October 8th at 12:00 PM and Thursday, October 9th at 6:00 PM on Metro Cable. The recording of this meeting can be viewed at Metro14. We welcome the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form which are located at the back of the room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment as listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them on silent mode. Thank you.
4.3 stellar student introduced by Board Member Michael Benjamin.
Yeah, thank you all for being here. I'm excited about this. This is kind of the best part we get to recognize our students. So today, we are recognizing Javier Mancada Orellano. He's an exemplary baker bear and very deserving of recognition for working hard in the classroom and on the field. Javier, greatly in his academic form and his teacher reports that he's starting to see his learning take off. He's a ding around and is exceptional. We are proud and know that he's going to be successful. Keep it up, Javi.
Does not want to say any words tonight, but he appreciates it. All I'll say about Javier, thank you for reading that, Board Member Benjamin, is that it's not how you finish. And we're super proud of him.
All right. Okay, so we got a little something for you. I think we're all gonna come out and take a picture, is what we're gonna do?
All right. We're gonna take a picture. Ready?
Let me ask you a question of who's your favorite football player? I'm talking about soccer. That's me. I watch the normal video all the time.
You did good. Okay, fake the smile, fake the smile. We got this, we got it. Come on.
Okay. Good job. Congratulations.
All right, moving on to 5.0, announcement of actions taken in closed session and.
Good evening, President Singh. There are three announcements in the session. First, the board approved a settlement agreement related to special education by a vote of seven to zero. Second, the board approved a settlement agreement with contractors and companies, ACIC, by a vote of seven to zero. ACIC was the surety for the prime contractor on the district's transportation infrastructure project. The parties resolved the dispute of the balance, including the release to ACIC $16,000.16. ACIC will release its claims against the district. The settlement is a compromise of disputed issues and not an admission of any liability. And finally, the board approved by a vote of seven to zero, a settlement with a CTA resolving back pay placed on the salary schedule. In exchange for the payment of $50,839.40, the employee agrees to release the district from any and all claims. That is it.
Thank you, and moving on to public comments. Brian.
We begin with Brooke Shelley, followed by Mackenzie Golding and Julian Galloway.
All right, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for this time this evening. I don't want to take up too much of it, but my name is Brooke Shelley, a third-year law student at McGeorge School of Law here in SAC. All year in school, I am actually taking a public education law this class, this semester. And one of the big things in our class is about advocacy in public education. But that's not really why I'm here. My fiance is a high school teacher in this district and has plenty of experience. Specifically, he's been a substitute teacher, done his student teaching, and he is now a teacher in special education. He loves his work, he loves the kinds of students, but he has expressed that he feels that the classrooms are impacted. He believes that the class ratio should be a lot smaller so that the teachers can afford more attention and time to these students, as they require more attention and time. Now, I understand that you are committed to collective bargaining agreement that was recently implemented, as well as the statute outlining special education class size, but I just want to come before you today and ask that you keep this class ratio topic in your mind going forward. When the topic comes up, I just ask that you consider to reduce the class size, to afford the teachers ample time, attention, and flexibility in dealing with these students, as they require a lot more than the other population of students. Furthermore, I would also advocate for there to be more paraeducators in the class. Now, I know that that requires more hiring and more funding, but I think it's a topic that could be highly beneficial going forward, as once again, it would help delegate time and attention to these students substantially more. I completely understand that you are limited to the collective bargaining agreement, but I just request that you keep this in your mind going forward. Thank you for your time today. I really appreciate it.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mackenzie Guling, and like Brooke said, I'm also a student at McGeorge. I am here to speak about the importance of maintaining and expanding the Career Technical Education, or CTE, trade classes within the district. CTE programs are proven to give students hands-on skills and prepare them for high-demand fields like healthcare, technology, construction, and in fact, the California Legislature Assembly Bill 821, in its text cites that the average high school graduation rate for students concentrating in CTE programs is 93% compared to an average national graduation rate of 80%. And students with greater exposure to CTE are more likely to graduate from high school, enroll in a two-year college, be employed, and earn higher wages. Not every student plans to attend a four-year university or higher education, and therefore, I think it's really important that districts implement and provide these CTE classes to students to allow them to have multiple pathways to success. By investing in these trade classes, you're not only strengthening your district, but also giving students meaningful opportunities to connect their education to what might be their future career. I encourage the district to just continue supporting and expanding CTE classes, and regardless of any students who have this connection in order to prepare themselves for the real world in the future.
Hello, my name is Julia. And like Mackenzie said, I am a student at McGeorge School of Law, and I would like to talk about the performing arts today, and I want to thank SAC City Unified for the efforts it has put to put this as one of its missions.
Taxpayer district lawyers as a blank, like a blank check to defend their discrimination and risk their admin's own reputation and career. If there are personnel issues, our diligent union staff are some of the hardest working people I have seen. But staff and parents from this district have no grounds for wasting district time on complaints that are not related to all students of the district without first disclosing the debt they have to administration for the handouts mentioned in this statement. I want to quickly note also, the district replay excluded James and Eric's comments in the pre-closed session public comments, but it's on the SAC Metro replay. And I have much more to say, but I really thank you all for your time.
Next is Tom McElhaney, followed by Zaira Joquin.
Well, Madam Superintendent, Mr. Board President, and distinguished trustees, good evening. I'm Tom McElhaney, retired, and member of the Wellis Committee, but more importantly, tonight, I am a recruit of pediatric endocrinologist Robert Lustig. Tonight is a shout out to our website, which on the Wellis Committee side is soon to contain many lessons from the University of California Television. It's hosted by UC faculty members Robert Lustig, Kimber Stanhope, Alyssa Epple, and Barbara Loriot. And to our faculty who might peruse, or better yet, use these lessons, and to the public that is rightly concerned with misinformation, I say this information coming from the medical school is reliable. And to two principals, Jim Peterson at Burbank, Jessica Martin at New Tech, my thanks for the welcome that you have shown Lustig's lessons. "There's a fight," says Lustig, "a revolution within the field of nutrition and health. What?" he asks, "are we doing in terms of our processed food environment? You can't have any form of societal intervention until the public is educated. We are trying to turn this chronic disease around." And I invite our district to delve into this troubling subject that he refers to and that he is an expert in. We can do it in humility and in humor, and we can begin to set our seniors on a path where they can successfully navigate our troublesome food environment. Thank you, guys.
Zaira Joquin, followed by Amanda Panton, Nia Buford, and then Shirley Finster.
Good evening, board members. My name is Zaira Joquin. I'm part of United Latinos. We are a civic engagement nonprofit, and today I want to bring your awareness about the initiative that we are partnering with the district and Civic Threat to initiate the Safe Routes to School Initiative in South Sacramento. And this project pertains to Area 7, 4, and 3. We're focusing on Title I schools, and one of the struggles that as a nonprofit work we encounter with carrying out SRTS projects or initiatives is the interaction with the district when it comes to routing traffic to the website. One of the goals is for us to promote credibility around this project, and we want to funnel the community traffic to a website, and we can do it on our personal website or our partner's website, but we would also like to have the district support in that area. Another very huge hurdle that we face is ensuring that the community members are aware of this, of this initiative, and most importantly, working with students as nonprofits. As nonprofits, there is a hurdle of working with students. If the grant doesn't allow that or permit that, we have to go through a process to work with students individually. A lot of the project objectives for SRTS in South Sacramento involve including students from the district, through pop-up events, through forums, town halls, and other art integration projects. I came in here right when the person talking about our integration and community education is, she was proposing those initiatives. I equally agree that those are important things that the district should move forward, especially as we're ramping up our Safe Routes to School initiative. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Amanda Panton, followed by Nia Buford and Shirley Finster.
As a Phoebe parent, I take issue with your decision to ignore our children. I regret the false assurances that you've heard us. Hearing is passive. Listening requires engagement, reflection, and action, and you have not demonstrated those. You have made a deliberate choice, not a misstep, not a misunderstanding, not a lapse in judgment, but a calculated decision continually pushed forward by your egos to turn your backs on the very children we entrusted you to serve. Your actions have consequences, not just for our students, but for the integrity of this district and the credibility of this board. The trust that once existed between the Phoebe families, the district, and the board is not just damaged, it's shattered. And every unanswered email, every fear-ridden early departure from our rally, every dismissive tone-deaf statement released reinforces this message: You do not care. These sixth-grade students who you have chosen to pretend aren't there, excuse me, are kids who crave challenge, who thrive on structure, who find joy in rigor. They want projects, they want tests, homework, presentations, novel studies. They want to be pushed, and they want Mrs. Rupert. You've taken all of that away from them. You say you know Phoebe. You don't, because if you did, you'd know that Phoebe, at Phoebe, learning is cool, collaboration is cool, doing well is cool, and you were stripping that culture away. That's not education, it's neglect, and it's not just a disservice, it's a disgrace. These kids are a bright spot for SAC City. You should consider yourselves lucky that they haven't left. Superintendent Allen, in your letter to Phoebe Hurst, you claim that your focus is first and foremost on the students and the educators that support them. I trust you now see how hollow that statement rings. It's what should have happened, but it hasn't. The students you are charged with serving have gone six weeks without a single graded assignment, without a test, without a meaningful instruction. Let's talk about consistency or lack of it. Let's address the double standard. There are instances of male teachers at our school removing carpet with no consequences. One of our former male principals removed shelving from a portable, prompting the district to come in to repair and finish the job. No reprimand, no investigation. Surely, this isn't a male-female issue, right? Or is it an HR issue with vague policies written in invisible ink? Or is it a board? Sometimes they can intervene, sometimes they can't, sometimes they will, sometimes they won't. The inconsistency is glaring.
Ms. Penn, I want to make sure everyone gets to talk.
I'm sorry, what?
I want to make sure everyone gets to talk.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I could ask you to do the right thing and bring Mrs. Rupert back, but we all know how this goes. Each of you will deflect, pass the buck, and claim it's someone else's call. But someone, anyone with a shred of integrity needs to step back, take a hard look at what's unfolding, and make the decision that no one else seems willing to make, because that's what it will take to stop this training.
Nia Buford, followed by Shirley Finster, and then Seth Ates and Tyler Millsap.
I am Nia Buford, one of Miss Rupert's sixth-grade students, and now just a student in Room 7. We were all excited for the chance to have Miss Rupert as our teacher one day. Everyone knows not only how amazing she is, but also her amazing personality, and most importantly, her teaching. I could tell how special of a teacher Miss Rupert was when I started at Phoebe Hurst. I saw how much her students loved her and how she cared for them the same way. Even though none of us ever got the chance to have her as a teacher, I was looking forward to the day I would officially get to, and that chance was not only taken away from me, but from many others. Losing Miss Rupert was like losing all hope in learning. Once everyone realized that she was not coming back, the classroom became a disaster. We were learning below-grade-level language arts and math, and it just wasn't fair at all for any of us. We had at least nine subs in the past six weeks, and I've not received one grade on any assignments, missed out on field trips, and one teacher bailed on us. And this seems okay to you? It just feels like the students, what the school is supposed to be about, weren't thought about in this decision at all, when we are the ones being affected by this whole situation. Taking away someone like Miss Rupert is not just removing a teacher, it's removing a role model, a mentor, and a person who made kids feel like they mattered. We have lost all hope in gaining any education, and we have lost someone who has made a huge impact in our lives. I just don't see how you could take away someone that amazing for ripping up a strip of carpet that has been there for years, too many to count. People make mistakes, but ripping up a strip of carpet should not be one that you cannot forgive. Nothing was damaged, students didn't get hurt, so it's really confusing to me on how you made this decision to take her away. Miss Rupert has been working at Phoebe Hurst her entire career, showing her dedication to teaching and to her students. We're asking you to listen to us, the students. We want Miss Rupert back. She made the school better, and she made the students better. Please give us back the chance to learn. Thank you.
I'm Shirley Finster, retired, teacher from SAC City Unified District. Logical consequences are the cornerstone of fair resolutions. Teachers are trained to punish the act and not the child. If Miss Rupert needed to be removed from her classroom because she was inept and reliable, too harsh, racist, inappropriate, then why would you deem inappropriate to put her in another classroom and thereby putting other students at risk? On the other hand, if she was a valuable asset to her students, then why would you punish both her and her students going forward over a simple, single situation that didn't impact her teaching or the students' learning, but rather simply offended the powers that be? Miss Rupert's job description is to teach the curriculum in an effective and compelling manner, engaging students and getting results. Clearly, she excelled at that. The administrator's job includes giving Miss Rupert and her students an environment that is conducive to learning. They failed to do that. Miss Rupert had to deal with that failure. She could have shrugged it off as not her problem to solve, but that's not how committed, conscientious people operate. She is committed to doing what needs to be done to give her students an environment that is conducive to learning. This is nothing more than an administrator who has not had adequate training in conflict resolution, who mistakenly goes for the win, which requires the other person to lose. This is nothing more than a power play with no regard for the casualties left in her wake. Who benefits from this move? Not the students, not Miss Rupert and her team. In fact, they have all taken a significant hit. So who benefits? And why does their need to prevail outweigh the needs and the well-being of all the students and the staff? Thank you.
We have two more speakers. We have two more speakers, Seth Ates for four minutes and Tyler Millsap for four minutes.
Sir, before you go, I just wanted to say, Ms. Finster, it's beautiful to see, Ms. Finster was my sixth-grade teacher at Great Heart Elementary School. So, shout out to Ms. Finster, just want to show some love, I view you in this space tonight. I don't think that I'll be able to live without you.
Good evening, trustees, President Singh, and Superintendent Allen. My name is Tyler Millsap, and I've had the opportunity to serve as a teacher, a principal, and a district administrator in a regional school district. I'm also the parent of a SAC City student, and I am grateful for the excellent experience my elementary student is currently having, so thank you, I know your work is hard. I'm here to advocate for teacher Janine Rupert and directly against your decision, as it currently stands, to transfer her from Phoebe Hurst Elementary School. I've shared this story with many educator colleagues at various levels, and I'm met with a similar response each time. It's disbelief and some version of, "What the..." fill in the next word as you will. I think it's important for you to know that your response to a well-regarded, long-serving employee has not only been upsetting to your own community, but it appears illogical, unfair, and vindictive beyond your community. I noticed a few references to restorative practices and restorative justice on your website. Specifically, your advertisement for community members to serve on your first restorative justice committee to, quote, "support the integration of restorative justice principles and practices across the district's policies and systems," end quote. Find it hard to believe in your commitment to this principle, considering how you have let this situation unfold. I'll offer a contrasting story. One year, a teacher where I worked decided to paint their classroom without authorization, and while they were doing so, spilled an entire gallon of paint onto newly-laid carpet squares. It's absolutely true that this well-intentioned teacher had violated district rules and regulations by doing this. However, the response to this teacher was not to drag them through the mud, shame them, and transfer them to a different school. Instead, the response was to re-educate the teacher about expectations and processes, instruct them not to do it again, and offer them the opportunity to pay for the damages, which they did. And then guess what happened? We moved on. And that teacher has remained at that site to this day, doing an exceptional job teaching mathematics well into their retirement years. Unlike your response, there was an opportunity for understanding, education, and restoration of harm. I cannot understand why you wouldn't want to take that same approach and model those principles that you are allegedly attempting to implement in your policies. Finally, I will share that it has repeatedly been mentioned that two other male employees at the site have also removed sections of carpet, and I'll admit, I cannot personally verify this information, but it's certainly out there. While I hope those teachers don't receive the same horrible fate as Miss Rupert, I do hope that you provide some information about why this case is so different than Miss Rupert's, so that your community isn't left with the impression that your actions aren't just punitive and disproportionate, but also unequal and discriminatory based upon sex. I encourage you to take a restorative stance and reinstate Janine Rupert to her teaching position at Phoebe Hurst Elementary School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
After nearly 11 years of being privileged to be a student at SCUSD, I, on behalf of the community, am disgusted at the hypocrisy of the Serna Center's decision to remove Phoebe Hurst Elementary's highly-renowned teacher, Miss Rupert, and relocating her to a new school. No words can encapsulate the division that the board has sewn between the community and the district staff, the latter whose employment is intended to serve the best interests of the people. But in the light of this development and with our reaction to this injustice, can this even be considered within the margins of our best interests? I come as an alumni of Phoebe, which ranks high among the top elementary schools in the entire state. One of the major reasons the school has attained this status is through the efforts of teachers, and all roads lead to Miss Rupert. Throughout my seven years there, my entire personality and behavior has shifted from a troubled and very chaotic child to a person who is immeasurably far more formed and intuitive. A majority of my developed character I owe to teachers just like Ms. Hendrickson and Miss Rupert. I had my fair share of so-called lapses in judgment back then. Both of them can testify to my unscrupulous acts dating back all the way back to kindergarten, which had earned me a record number of suspensions and furthermore disciplinary actions, along with a reputation of notoriety. Phoebe Hurst could have cast me aside and tossed me to another school, but their tolerant staff, who make up the school's faculty, have the conscience to not give up on a person like me. Instead of disowning me, they continue to shape me into what I am today, someone who has a drive to obtain knowledge. If the district cannot muster up the same reconsideration for Miss Rupert, then the results now show a failure to match the same moral standard upheld by the school. Is this not a sign of drastic necessity for reconsideration? The board must come to a realization that we have no intention of backing down, not until our ultimatum of bringing her back is met with absolute certainty. We will not merely live with a defeat that deprived these students of an experience that we earned, but they were robbed of. The Phoebe Parent Teacher Organization has just lost one of its cornerstones due to the wrathful policies of the district that intend to divide first and ask questions later. Has anyone ever considered that thanks to this act of infraction, the U in SCUSD is nearing a step closer to standing for unreasonable? This act of relocation only seeks to undermine the policies that will lead to a proclaimed brighter future for Sacramento, which begins with the community. By taking an action, you hold complete responsibility for instigating the distrust and dissent of the students, parents, and teachers, not just from Phoebe, but across the entire city. A committee that listens to the voice of the people would find a more reasonable way to discipline a teacher rather than overstepping the boundaries of repercussions, but it is impossible to imagine a more ideal result when we are met with a devastating statement like those issued from the district. The incapability of the current state of the Board of Education has resulted in us to bear the burden of obsolete architecture. Who ignored the request for removing the flea-infested carpets for years? Miss Rupert took it upon herself and the students to ameliorate the threat posed by them. It's not too late to bring her back, the position is still vacant, please don't shuttle in a new T-shirt that the kids are unfamiliar with into Room 7, which continues to wear out the children and leaving us completely forsaken with only Mr. Hendrickson to be the major driving force of the community. Is this what we must befall the students to prove a point? This needed to be said from somebody who knew the school more than a lot of people in this administration do today. It's the indifference, it's the vague response and the representatives that do not represent that will eventually be the downfall of the district and all it stands for. Change can be made, it's up to you, the board members who listen to this, the students who learn, the teachers that unite us, to make change. Thank you.
We have no more public comment.
All right, thank you so much. We go on to item 8.0, Consent Agenda. Do we have a public comment on Consent Agenda?
We do, we have one speaker signed for this, it's Terrence Gladney.
When I first heard about the intended changes that came from the policy committee about the committee structures, including the LCAP committee, LCAP PAC, and other committees of which I was a member, my understanding after speaking with some of you was that there was an intention to get an increased number or diversity of voices. I assumed that that meant increased parent or community voices, but after watching the last board meeting via the stream, I realized it meant the inclusion of staff voices. So a couple of things, like the whole time that I've been an advocate over 15 years in this district, anytime something has been proposed from the community, the immediate response is that we have to negotiate that with labor partners. So my understanding then is that in processes that are inclusive of processes that come from the LCAP, there's already a voice for that component of our community. So to see that now there's equal representation of staff and parents and community members on the LCAP PAC, which is intended to be a parent advisory committee, which I didn't see in the agenda, it just says LCAP Committee. CDE says it is a parent committee. It has to have at least 51% parent or guardian representation, so as it's written, it's noncompliant. So what can we do at this point? I think from you guys' governance perspective, I don't always agree with a lot of what happens on that side, but what I have seen with some of the ad hoc committees that have occurred in the past is that they were noticed, they were accessible and open to the public for participation. I still have calendar reminders for fiscal transparency for facilities from way back as far as like eight years ago, I still have those items on my calendar. I would ask that you guys pull this so that it is compliant. My understanding is that SCOE sent an email to our district earlier today to let you know that it's noncompliant. Let's start with conversation and inclusion so that a parent committee can actually be a parent committee. We have an event on the 22nd where we're encouraging people from school sites to follow pathways into increased district leadership and engagement. We literally just removed nine possible seats for them to do so without the inclusion of them, so it seems sort of undermining to our intended and stated purpose. So I would ask that you guys pull this, revisit it, and make it compliant with what the intention of that. There's no precedent in this district, and I have not heard of any other parent advisory committee where there's 50% representation other than like the CSAC, but that is different, right? LCAP in its intention was so that local representation, parents and guardians have a voice in how this happens. Also, as a district that serves middle and high school students, we have to have a student advisory committee, and we have one in terms of leadership overall, but I don't know if it's been articulated that they have responsibility to also provide comments and input and advisement to this LCAP and LCFF, so I would ask that we just do a little bit better.
Thank you, Terrence.
Thank you for the public comment. 8.0 consent, do we have any, do we have a motion to move?
I would like to pull 8.1D and then move the rest of the consent agenda.
All right. Member Jean.
Jean, why did you want to pull something? To add your name?
Okay, thank you, I apologize.
All right, thank you, guys. The motion we have is to approve with the exception of 8.1D, so we can have a conversation by Member Kayata. Do we have a second?
Absolutely.
All right, student preferential vote?
Aye.
Roll call.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ebar?
Aye.
Thank you. Member Kayata, so is yours.
All right, so I have some comments on 8.1D, and it should not take too long, but I would ask for your patience, I wrote it down to make sure I got it right. So 8.1D deals with the approval of unauthorized vendor payments. This item asked the board to approve these additional unauthorized vendor payments. This is something we've been doing for several months now. I have a motion to make on this, but before I present it, I want to speak plainly about the fiscal situation that we are in and why I believe the urgent action cannot wait to address that. My comments tonight are for my fellow board members. Some of what I'm about to say may be uncomfortable for staff, I want to acknowledge that, but I want to say that discomfort is the price of accountability, and this is a price we should have paid years ago. I want to be clear that I did make staff aware of my plans to discuss this. My intent is to clarify the board's fiscal obligations so that the board and staff can work together collaboratively in the future to prevent this from happening again. At our last board meeting, staff informed us that the district has spent tens of millions of dollars before requesting authorization by this board. This item continues to add to that tab. One of our most basic obligations as a board is to adopt a budget, setting priorities for how we use our limited resources, and giving staff a roadmap to follow. But for that system to work, staff must spend within the authority we set, not ignore the budget and ask for retroactive approval for unauthorized spending. More importantly, we can only express our priorities as a board and as a community through our budget if a spending falls within that budgetary authority. When it comes to our budget, the buck stops with the board. Staff compared our shortfall to a tsunami about to wipe out our city. The wave was not an accident, it was allowed to build for years. Staff allowed it by not preparing better for our spending needs, and the board allowed it by approving items like this one without demanding corrective action. Unbudgeted spending is fiscally reckless, plain and simple. It should never have been allowed to happen, and it should stop now. In any other organization, public or private, including governmental, this level of fiscal mismanagement would have led to immediate terminations. I'm not asking for that tonight, but I want to be clear. Accountability must be real. Staff who are about this must have their duties, reporting structures, and fitness for their roles closely reviewed. Staff need to understand their obligation to ensure that each dollar spent is in the budget. Our fiscal challenges are not confined to just one area. However, the challenge before us tonight, and it's a big one, relates to special ed. We must tackle this item as a first step towards taking control of our finances. We have known for years that our special education department's spending is a problem. A 2017 report that a previous board commission from the Council of Greatest Schools made this abundantly clear. The State Audit applied to it in 2019. Parents have raised it for even longer, recognizing that we keep spending more, but outcomes for our students with disabilities are not improving. Instead of fixing our system, we've continued to kick the can down the road. We failed to deliver the right services in- We failed to deliver the right services in-house, so costs explode through lawsuits, attorney fees, and expensive outside providers. Then staff come and ask us to retroactively best the overspending. To me, that is unacceptable. To clarify, I'm not asking that we cut services for our students with disabilities, far from it. I ran for this position because I want to improve outcomes for students with disabilities. That's the primary reason I'm here today. That includes my own son. It's personal when I say that I would never ask our students who need the most help to suffer in order for us to balance the budget. What I'm asking is for better planning and more intentional spending. We need to invest in our own staff, who provide better services than contractors, and save us money while doing so. We need to be deliberate in the guidance that we provide to IEP teams around what is the most appropriate and the least restrictive service for our students. The answer is not always to select the most expensive outside contractor, but it seems to be the culture in our district is to do just that. We can improve outcomes for our students with disabilities while saving money. I've raised these concerns since my first month on the board. Staff has asked for more time repeatedly. Well, for me, that time is up tonight. I'm asking for the board to draw a line in the sand for how we will operate in the future, beginning with unbudgeted special education spending. I believe that if we do not act now, our financial hole will only get deeper. If we continue to operate like this, in solacy, it will no longer be a threat, it will be a fact. In my view, our path forward starts with three key actions that reflect a cultural shift in how our district operates. And these are some of the things I've brought up before, but I want to reiterate them to drive them home. Number one is that we conduct more thorough audits. We need deeper audit procedures and a new independent auditor to take a hard look at our books and practices. I know that this can be done because I did this work for the state of California. The board has already directed this to happen, and yet it has not been meaningfully implemented. Number two is to shut down unbudgeted spending. No more spending first and asking permission later. Every dollar spent must be reflected in the budget. If we find ourselves spending more than anticipated, we need to course correct mid-year, not keep spending and wait for our actuals to see how much damage we did. If services are delayed as budgets get revised, staff need to prepare for that. That is how budgeting works. Number three is to bring a legal counsel in-house. We need a strong cabinet-level attorney, a member of the cabinet team, who can set comprehensive legal strategy and control our outside spending. The board made it clear how important this was two years ago, when we refused to increase outside legal costs until staff agreed to bring an in-house counsel with a higher salary that we could actually get a qualified individual. However, staff failed to fill this position, and I believe since then, actually I know, we have now unfunded it. Meanwhile, outside legal costs have scar-racketed, and our problems with special education and the costs that come with them have not abated. The excuses will not cut it anymore. For me, the bottom line is this: no more excuses, no more delays, and no more business as usual. The time for patience is over. It is the time for action now. So getting to my motion. My motion is that we table the vote on item 8.1D to a future board meeting. I do understand that we need to eventually approve this since services were rendered that we need to pay for. However, I cannot do so on the consent calendar and without significantly more context than what we have before us today. Spending that collectively puts us tens of millions of dollars in the red is not routine, and it should never have been treated that way. Most importantly, staff need to recognize that this item before us is not just about our unauthorized vendor process. There is a difference between addressing contractual challenges and how we actually pay for the services. The payment needs to be within the budget. My primary concern is that these expenses were not budgeted, and that the escalating costs were not addressed in our budget in a timely manner that would have helped us avoid what the staff alluded to as a tsunami. Should the board agree with my motion, I would ask that we direct staff to return with a detailed justification that, one, explains in more detail what got us to this point, including a detail on our unauthorized vendor process, and, two, what our plans are to avoid this unauthorized spending in the future. At the least, staff need to identify clear procedures that allow us to understand what our financial picture is throughout the year, well into answer when we publish our actuals. When this item comes back, assuming my motion is successful, I demand that it would not be put on the consent calendar and actually given to us as a presentation. And with that, I would ask for a second if anyone would agree with what I've said. I'm open for questions, and I definitely acknowledge that others might have some comments as well before we move towards a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kayata. Before we move to a vote, do we have any board members who have any additional comments or questions? I'll clarify the motion. If not, Member Rhodes?
I would just say that shutting down unauthorized spending, I definitely agree with that. And having a conversation around how we better, in our system, gain accountability and better track record of making sure that we're staying in our budget is something that's going to be very important, especially moving over these next year or so. So I will move it forward, look forward to the conversation at another board meeting.
Any other members have any comments? All right. To clarify, the motion is to table with a request for staff to present this rather than have it on consent agenda. So do we have a second?
Yeah.
Oh, you have a second? All right. We will go ahead and do a vote, so we'll start with student preferential vote.
Aye. Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 9.0, Communications from Employee Organizations. Let's start with SETA.
David Fisher, First Amendment City Teachers Association. So like all of you, we were concerned and surprised by the information that we learned about the district's budget, right? Based on unauthorized spending from unauthorized contracts that were spent last year, last school year. Earlier this week, we did have a very constructive meeting with Chief Business Officer Marking and Chief Human Resources Officer McCarron, which followed an earlier meeting we had with Superintendent Allen, which we appreciated. We also met with Becky Bryant and Iris Taylor to discuss the serious challenges that Special Education Department is facing. So while the challenges before us are daunting, if done right, the changes necessary may produce a realignment of the district's resources to provide those services better students so richly deserve. But it's also clear that a realignment is going to require some immediate and, in some cases, painful choices. As I've mentioned before, while staffing for certified staff is largely driven by enrollment, enrollment declines, certified staff declines, it's not the case for administrators. Today, our district has nearly 100 more administrators than it did pre-COVID, when the district enrollment was nearly 10,000 students higher. Additionally, continuing to provide additional compensation for administrators at "priority schools" just isn't justifiable. Priority schools haven't even actually existed in reality for nearly a decade and probably should never have existed, in my opinion. Additionally, paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to remain part of the anti-union core district is also no longer defensible. There are other long overdue actions that can be taken immediately. These are immediate savings the district can implement now. Additionally, the district needs to provide a much higher level scrutiny and oversight to those independent charters that continue to operate and provide substandard education to students in the district. Listening to the presentation from Aspire last meeting, it seems clear that the district would be entirely justified in denying that charter, particularly in light of AP 1505, which includes fiscal impact on the district as an additional reason to justify a denial of the charter. On a similar note, and as Vanessa and some of the St. Hope colleagues will speak about in a minute, the board approved the renewal of the St. Hope charters with conditions, including that St. Hope would enter into an MOU that embeds the conditions into an enforceable agreement. St. Hope has continued to thumb its nose at the district and continues to stall and delay as the negotiations appear to be heading to another phase. We can tell you from eight years of experience, St. Hope's leaders are quite willing to slow-walk negotiations to avoid reaching agreement with us. As you hear from Vanessa, they have resumed their unlawful bargaining violations, violations of law which put their charter at risk. When will St. Hope ongoing transgressions result in the appropriate oversight and accountability the district is charged with providing? This board has the ability to immediately appoint a voting member to the St. Hope board. We strongly encourage you to take this action and provide a higher level of oversight to this historically bad actor. With that, I'm going to turn over the rest of our time to Vanessa and some of our brave siblings from St. Hope.
Dear Superintendent Allen and SUSD Board Trustees, attempting to bargain in good faith with St. Hope Public Schools is beginning to feel like a fool's errand. The last time St. Hope was willing to meet to bargain, it was September 4th, when they presented a proposal that would barely make a dent in 86% of St. Hope teachers' salaries and would tie teacher pay to evaluations, something St. Hope had already agreed was off the table. They canceled our September 24th meeting and now suddenly are not available until the end of October. We have made ourselves available every day, and considering that Superintendent Ferguson does not live in the Sacramento region, we have even offered Zoom as a possible option. St. Hope continues to delay negotiations in bad faith. Meanwhile, teachers continue to resign. Another teacher quit this week, sharing with me that he simply could not afford to be a St. Hope teacher anymore. It seems like the only thing St. Hope considers to treat with urgency is their union busting campaign that they continue to wage on St. Hope teachers. We have filed charges with the Public Employment Relations Board for interference with union meetings, bad faith bargaining, union busting conversations led by a contractor hired by St. Hope, and violating teachers' rights to wear a T-shirt with union insignia. This week, the most senior ELA teacher at Sacramento High School and vocal leader on the St. Hope SETA bargaining team was officially reprimanded, sent home, and warned of potential termination. The reason? She wore her red SETA shirt to demonstrate support for the St. Hope teachers' efforts to secure a fair contract. It is well settled that public employees have the right to organize and bargain collectively. This broad right includes the right to display union insignia and slogans. Absence special circumstances, any restrictions the employer places on the display of union insignia, such as union logos on T-shirts, are considered an unlawful interference with employees' broad right to participate in the activities of their exclusive bargaining unit. St. Hope's explanations of their dress code are absurd. First, they said the teachers couldn't wear their union shirt during the school day. Then they said they couldn't wear their union shirt because teachers need to be business casual. So teachers dressed it up and wore collared shirts, blazers, and slacks with their T-shirts tucked in. That was still not acceptable, and teachers got written up. Then they said T-shirts could only be worn on Fridays, though Fridays are never even mentioned in their dress code policy. Then they said the SETA logo on our red shirts was too large, though sometimes they allow other graphic T-shirts with large graphics and logos. I showed a series of T-shirts, and I've shared this with you, to the head of HR and their instructional coach contractor, who for some reason is involved in reprimanding teachers for wearing union shirts and having one-on-one conversations about the union with teachers. And I asked, which of these shirts are acceptable for teachers to wear at St. Hope? They said any shirt that represents a fraternity, a sorority, all of those, definitely. No problem. A sports shirt that doesn't say the full college name with a very large logo, red shirt, no problem. I asked, what if that a T-shirt that says alumni of Trump University? They said probably, but they had to double-check if that was a real university. I then asked, what if a teacher wanted to promote college, Los Rios College, by wearing a CFT T-shirt, the Union of the Teachers of our local colleges? They said absolutely not. That was their easiest decision. I asked them, what if they wore their T-shirt with a dressed-up blazer and slacks and night shoes? Not if it was with their SETA shirt. I also want to call to your attention a picture of the teacher who was sent home and ask you, is this an unacceptable attire for an educator to be wearing? We have provided cease and desist notices in an effort to ensure that our SETA members' rights are respected at St. Hope. In response to these notices, I was told by their head of HR that they have to do this. No, they do not have to do this. Instead of spending their time obsessing over how large the font is on an SETA shirt, they should focus on why teachers are fleeing St. Hope. I want to make sure our other St. Hope teachers have a chance to share their perspective. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Taya Kershenmon, and I'm here to inform you about the first-ever teacher picket that we had at St. Hope, and I want to request that you put more pressure on keeping St. Hope accountable to their charter renewal conditions. As many of you know, last Thursday, we held an informational picket at SAC High where we had news outlets, teachers, other unions, and board members and members of the community come out to put pressure on the school to bargain in good faith, obey the law, and agree to a fair contract. Many people spoke up at our picket, sharing their experiences at St. Hope and the need for a contract and resources and how they support our cause. We even had a St. Hope alumni talk about his desire to see better resources and conditions for students and teachers. Unfortunately, during our picket, we were interrupted and heckled by an administrator who went so far as to get in my face while I was speaking to intimidate and shame me in front of everyone. Last year, I was warned not to get involved with the union because it would put a target on my back, and now I'm starting to see those warnings turn into a reality. Yesterday, I was sent home to change out of my SETA shirt, the same one I'm wearing right now. I was told that the logo was too big on the shirt and was not allowed per the SAC High dress code. SETA has already filed charges for workplace violations and sent a cease and desist for the school to stop reprimanding us for wearing our union shirts, but it didn't stop them from sending me home. The charter renewal conditions that you set last year state that they must follow labor laws. St. Hope has continued operations without enough consequences, and we need you to put more pressure on them so they will actually obey the law and bargain in good faith. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Shad Selby. I'm a former physical education teacher at SAC High, former as of yesterday. They'd been dragging their feet on this contract for so long, the promise of credential assistance came and went, and I had to withdraw from Fortune School of Education. And in doing so, my PIP was in violation, so they had to let me go. However, my experience is not unlike all of the other educators at SAC High. And I've come to you to tell you about their not-meeting education code in physical education California says that you need to have 400 minutes every 10 days for moderate to vigorous physical education. And right now, I'm at 260, and my cohort is at 180, because they're a charter school, they get to do what they want, and we have to teach two days of in-class instruction and three days of in-class instruction. We alternate by quarter. No curriculum. I asked, what should I teach for the in-class instruction? I was told to figure it out. I said, what about the moderate to vigorous activity? I was told to have them come up to the board and write things on the board. That's physical activity. Also, we don't have a female locker room, so I can't have the women dress, so I can't have the men dress. That affects issues with Title IX. No locker room for PE, no locker room for women's sports. I was a flag football coach at Burbank, and I wanted to be a flag football coach at SAC High, but they didn't have a budget for an assistant coach. They had already had a budget for a head coach. They don't have equipment for the flag football team. They don't have any other facilities for the flag football team, whereas the football team has everything that you could possibly imagine. Flags didn't even come in until last week. We're halfway through the season. I'll speed up here real quick. I have been calling attention to safety issues at the school. In particular, water grates around the field were broken, easy ankle busters, broken benches, broken equipment. Again, no female locker room. The female softball coach office is in the male locker room. I don't know why. For doing this, I was labeled a table shaker by the AD, and this is not out of the ordinary. I was told my first day of Q4 last year that I should keep my head down, don't say anything, and I'll be fine. Well, it's not fine. It's broken. And I implore you, no, I demand that you stop listening to us and you start taking out. action. Thank you very much.
Before I became a teacher, I spent 20 years in the United States Army. I worked as a scout doing reconnaissance, I worked as an intel analyst, and I worked as a recruiter. I returned as a sergeant first class with more than three years spent in the combat zone of Iraq. My career was defined by discipline, sacrifice, and unwavering commitment to the mission at hand. Now I stand here not in uniform, but as the person that stands in front of a classroom. And I can tell you this, while the setting has changed, the core values of service, dedication, and responsibility remains the same. In the Army, we knew that no mission could succeed without preparation, resources, and commitment from leaderships to take care of their people. Soldiers put their lives on the line, but rely on the government to equip them with what was necessary to succeed. Without support, the mission was compromised. Teaching is no different. Every day, we step into our classrooms ready to serve, not with weapons, but with knowledge, patience, and resilience. Our mission is to shape the next generation, to prepare them to be strong, capable citizens. But just like in the military, we cannot succeed if we're not given the proper support. That is why a fair contract matters. This isn't about asking for luxuries. It's about ensuring we have the tools, the respect, and the stability we need to carry out our mission. Just as soldiers deserve honor, fair compensation, and lasting support, so do teachers deserve contracts that reflect the gravity of our work and the responsibility we carry. When I think back at my years in uniform, one lesson stands out: No mission succeeds without unity. The same holds true here. When we stand together as a union, we affirm that our mission is collective, our strength is shared, and our voice cannot be ignored. I served my country abroad, now I serve my community at home. I am proud of both, but I also know servers require support. And for us as teachers, this means a fair contract, one that honors our commitment, strengthens our classroom, and invests in the future of our students. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have our district advisory committees. We'll start with the Student Advisory Council.
Hi, guys. Good evening. We hope it's been a good week for you. My name is Justine Chu Griffith, and I'm a senior at West Campus, and I am joined today by Vivian Tadi, who is a sophomore at Rosemont. We are excited to share a quick update on the Student Advisory Council's progress, highlighting our developing skills in research and data collection. To start off with an encouraging note, our youth leaders have identified research tools to collect both qualitative and quantitative student data regarding their experiences in SUSD. This strategy includes developing youth surveys that include short, open-ended questions similar to the survey from two years ago, which got over 1,500 student responses. We're also looking to potentially identify individuals that would be open to interviews from these surveys, and we are looking at facilitating listening sessions at our high schools to receive more detailed responses. The focus areas we have framed toward and hope to learn more about include what students want to change within the district, ways the district can better support post-high school aspirations, and how to improve student motivation. The SAC also has a different approach this year. We're going to be expanding on who we collect data and input from. We would like to hear more from our teachers and staff as they offer insights and another perspective in regards to what is going on at our school sites. The SAC would also like a more open understanding with a new lens in seeking teacher and staff perspectives could potentially offer reliable and honest feedback and more in-depth understanding of the complexities between students and social issues.
Secondly, we would like to circle back and address the parking concerns at Rosemont High School. It is to our understanding that socioeconomically disadvantaged students are waived from being charged for parking, and we would like to thank you for that clarification. However, there are students that have allegedly not been waived from charged parking and claim that they continue to be fined. We would like to urge a little bit more communication regarding these regulations between the school administration and student body. Students of all backgrounds are our priority and responsibly to protect and support, and we would greatly appreciate if the board and school administration could ensure more clarity and support regarding this new policy. Finally, we would like to highlight an exciting collaboration between the Communications Department and the SAC. Community Engagement Manager Nicole Kengas has reached out to the SAC to develop more youth-led media content highlighting and celebrating youth culture, youth voices, and youth rights. SAC has recently been developing an upcoming Fijian-American celebration video for SUSD social media platforms. This highlights the importance of inclusion and celebrates the diverse populations that represent SUSD and will hopefully connect communities across cultures within our youth communities and beyond. We thank you for your time and efforts and really appreciate your attention to our development and consideration of our actions. Your commitment to our students' futures is invaluable.
So I just wanted to share some important upcoming events that we have going on. On Tuesday, October 21st, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at Harum Johnson High School, we will have, CAC will host Ask SPED. So many special education parents have questions about everything, from one-on-one aides, which I mentioned earlier, curriculum to behavior plans, social, emotional learning, and augmented communication, summer school, and so on and so forth. The CAC has asked the Special Education Department to come together in one location and answer these important questions directly. So families will have the opportunity to register in advance, scan the QR code, and even submit questions ahead of time so that they can be part of the discussion and we can make sure we focus on what matters most. The event is critical because at this time, the federal, the state level, locally, our district, we're making a lot of changes, and parents have a lot of questions that's not being answered. So they deserve them, and we want to make sure that we do this amicably so that everybody is answered and feels good at the end of the day. It's hard, but this is our second annual, and we're going to be streamlining it to make sure that there is no confrontations and so on and so forth, and that's why we have the Google form to be done beforehand. I want to encourage you to help us spread the word about this event, invite the families from your area, and make sure that their voices are part of those solutions that I talked about. Ask SPED is not just a meeting, it's an opportunity for parents to finally get the answers they have been waiting for and a face behind those decisions that impact our children every day. As you may know, we meet on the third Tuesday of the month in the South Carolina Room. You are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, the District English Learner Advisory Committee. After that, we have LCAP.
October 2nd. Today in Black history, in 1800, Nat Turner was born. In 1937, Johnny Cochran was born. In 1967, Thurgood Marshall was appointed as the first African American on the Supreme Court. Black history and Black people are not a monolith. The reminders I have taking from those facts is that sometimes change comes from outside of the system. Oftentimes it does, but sometimes we have to become part of the system as well. Our partnership is what will get us to the next phases of success for our scholars. To that point, I did want to celebrate the fact that at the beginning of the school year was the inception of the first African American Studies course in our district, the AP African American Studies course was adopted by McClatchy. So it's great news. So we talk about Hovarigani, that is amazing. The hard work is paying off. So I do want to thank Principal Egan, thank Coach Jett, I call him Coach Jett, but Mr. Jett. I want to thank, you know, Ms. Erin Finley and Danny Rilary and Ashley Alexander and their entire team. The rollout and how it's happening, you know, is not perfect. It's the first time we're doing it, but it matters. It matters not only for our Black scholars and Black families, but for all of our scholars. When I looked at the demographic representation of scholars enrolled in the course, it's, you know, there's white students, there's Filipino students, there's Black students, there are young ladies and there are young men. And it matters because they can get a better understanding, especially in this climate that we're in right now, of how much more we're alike in terms of our shared struggles as well as our shared triumphs. We look forward as an organization to continue to partner, to push the curriculum forward for more of our students that may not have access to an AP pathway. And in doing so, we're partnering with Ashley Alexander and her team to help with recruitment of Black teachers around the curriculum development process, as well as Black families and scholars to help share the, or spread the awareness that these opportunities exist. Speaking around African American Studies, we've been asked at times to sort of focus on that as our one thing. But even at this podium tonight, we've heard uplifted through the students from the George School of Law, from the CAC chair, from the uplifting of community schools, we talked about student engagement. Later, there will be, you know, updates on the Black Parallel School Board policies around their action plan. All those things create an intersection that can't allow us to just focus on African American Studies, but we can leverage it as an anchor to build on things like culture and climate, staffing and recruitment and retention. You know, the fact that we have representation at, you know, at the dais from a student board member. All those things matter, and those things will be at the center of the work that we continue to do in partnership with our liaison, board member Benjamin. We're just really excited about some upcoming opportunities and just really being increasingly focused around the work. So thank you all, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you. Community Schools Advisory Committee. And then American Indian Education Program Parent Committee.
It's been a while since I've talked with the countdown clock, so I might go fast. Hello, board member, our trustee superintendent. My name is Catalina Abandano. I'm the secretary of the American Indian Education Program. I am also a parent of three kids at SAC City Unified, and I'm a member of the Cherokee Nation. Since we last gave our update, which was last school year, so I'm going to start with what we did over the summer. We hosted a summer program that was a week long, and we had 33 students from 17 different schools participate. That week was filled with field trips, like SAC State, the Six Flags Aviation Museum, IMAX. We also had various cultural programs, such as beating and pineapple preparation and education. You want to add? She was one of our high school ambassadors that helped with the program. We also hosted, I guess the kids were ages, we did K through sixth, but we also had a few older siblings come and go as they were allowed.
I think that it's a really good opportunity to connect Native students together. Like, a lot of students I know, like, went to, like, my sibling schools were there, and they got to meet them.
Okay, and so, and again, this is a program that we continue to do every summer. The last few years, we had made it only a half-day event, and this year, we did a full-day event, which was very exhausting. But how many times do you fall asleep on the way home? But so far this year, we have hosted a field trip to the state capitol for the 58th Annual California Native American Day. We had 23 students from 13 different schools come with us on our bus, but we also had several students show up with their families to meet with us during that day. Students were allowed to colleges, employers, they also were able to talk to Native elders, participate in dancing, speaking with Native leaders within their communities. It was another one of those great opportunities where we got to bring a lot of people from across the district together to develop relationships that they otherwise wouldn't get to develop. My daughter personally has made a lot of lifelong friendships with students at other schools she would have never met outside of this program. Events that we do have happening, we are going to be doing some beating classes, earring-making classes, medicine bag making. I also would like to invite the board and everybody in the room to attend the Sacred Pathways Careers College Culture and Community Event that is happening this Saturday at Charles A. Jones. They're going to have employers, colleges, guest speakers, Native library, free books, a drum group, information about FAFSA and American Indian education resources. It's from Tentative, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, moving on to student member report.
Hi, all. Happy October. First, I want to give thanks to our previous student board member, Justine, and to SAC's Rosemont representative, Vivian, for the concise and well-said update. To further on what my peers from the SAC discussed, I'm a little disappointed to see that no action, no action has been taken regarding the Rosemont parking policy. And furthermore, now that I'm in a position where I can hear what students talk about and listen to them scrutinize this decision, I want to just echo what the majority of students at Rosemont are saying, and it's that they're against this parking policy. And from my knowledge, low socioeconomic status students are too not being made aware of the option to have the fees waived. And in this seat, I promise to represent all those students and prioritize them. So going forward from here, I want to suggest that instead of enforcing this policy, administrators should instead revise it and alter it with the students and come to agreement over what seems reasonable. I'm sure the SAC will be pushing for this moving forward. Next, I want to discuss the main elephant in the room, which is the budget. Students I've talked to are generally unaware of the recent developments within the district regarding the budget, but for those who do know, they're worried about what this means for the everyday student. I really do encourage the board to keep communication with students over this issue and be as transparent as possible with them as we can. Lastly, to kind of end on a more happy note, I want to share out more resources once again for our students who are interested in post-secondary options. There will be a college and career fair on October 11th at Rosemont High School, and I highly encourage all students to put aside any hesitation. I've attended this fair for the past two years, and it's done nothing but helped me narrow down what I want to do for my future, also connecting me to more opportunities and specifying my details for applications to colleges. And then lastly, if Terrence is still in the room, I'd like to talk with him and connect him to my BSU at my school. I go to West Campus, so if he hears this wherever he seems to be, then that would be great. Yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you. Terrence, did you hear that? You got it connected. Okay. All right. Thank you. Superintendent Report.
Thank you, everyone. I want to remind our families that the district is seeking your input on a proposed academic calendar change that would begin during the 26th, '27 school year. The district is considering a permanent calendar change to a mid-August start date and a late-May ending. We have identified a handful of important benefits to students, especially those in middle and high school grades. These benefits include better timing for final exams, an earlier practice season for fall, improved workforce opportunities for students. Families should have received a survey through Parent Square, and the information will help us gauge whether our families feel these reasons are important enough to them as well to warrant a change. Please help us by completing this survey. Before the board considers the change later this year, we are offering five community meetings at our comprehensive high schools to provide a forum for your feedback. All the dates, times, locations were also shared at the same time when you receive the survey. Lastly, I would like to share some amazing news. We have received word, I think it was this week. Yes. We have received word, I think it was this week, yes, from the California State Board Association that SAC City's plan for reimagining school safety has officially awarded the Golden Bell for school climate and safety. Very good. I want to congratulate and thank the Board for their direction, faith, and guidance to create this new equitable path to safety for our students. I want to thank Mr. Loz, he's not here tonight, and the Safe School Team for their tireless work, and all of our safety and intervention staff at our schools. In addition, I would like to thank the community groups that partnered with us on this groundbreaking work, including the Black Parallel School Board, Rose Family Creative Empowerment Center, and Always Knocking. Congratulations to you all, this is so well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next up is me, and then it's all of us. So I'll start with this. Try to make things light, but they're not always light. In my role as, in the last nine months as President, I've never seen the role, and I don't think anyone sees the role, as being the sole leader, sole voice, or sole person who speaks for us, but rather tries to figure out how to move us in the same direction in the best benefit of our community, our schools, and our, and our staff members. One of those, well, two of those main things that we do is set policy and make sure that we have an understanding of, fiduciary understanding of our budget, and making sure that we budget responsibly. I'm going to start with policy. To showcase to the community, sometimes we forget what we have all accomplished together. One of those things is safety. And in addition to what Superintendent Allen just mentioned, we've also taken the safety of our students and our staff members in the face of immigration raids across this country very seriously. Last week, AB 49, which is the California Safe Haven School Act, passed, and was signed into legislation by the Governor. But we did that in January of this year. We did that far before any of this legislation was even thought of. And I say that not to give ourselves a pat on the back, but as a reminder to this community that we are constantly listening. It is hard to sit in these seats and try to explain to everyone out there that we actually do hear you, but we do. And part of that is taking action before it even becomes something that's Instagrammable or social media exciting or gets us a bunch of likes or views on the internet. Sometimes the things we do are quiet, and they're quiet on purpose in order to protect those who wish to remain in the shadows, not because we want them in the shadows, but maybe that's where they're most safe. And that includes our students and our staff members and others who continue to protect our kids at our school sites, so I just want to mention that. Another thing that we have to talk about is our duty from a budget perspective. Member Kaia mentioned a ton of things that I absolutely agree with. What I want to talk about is that we are absolutely in a $43 million deficit. I want to make that number clear. I don't want to shy away from the deficit that we're facing as a district. And when we think about this deficit, I also think, well, we're in these positions because you elected us to be in these positions to figure these things out. I don't think anyone wanted to be in a deficit. I don't think any of us were expecting this, and absolutely the funding woes that came about were definitely unexpected, which is what has raised us to have the questions that we have as a Board. Because our job is oversight, our job is policy, our job is not the day-to-day. But if we need to figure out how to support our staff in a way that the day-to-day issues can be supported and fixed so that we can balance our budget, then I think this Board is prepared to take certain actions and guidance so that we can help all of us move forward in a position that gets the students the absolute support that they need and that those cuts do not come to their classes and they do not come to the support services that help them succeed in SAC City Unified. However, one of the biggest things I saw is that when we made budgetary decisions last year, we did them with our students in mind. We lowered class sizes, we got our school sites to a place where we can have more attention for our children. I heard from a couple of law school students today that talk about lowering class sizes. We've done that. We have done that in this district. We did that knowing that there's a fiscal impact of lowering class sizes. We didn't know that there would be a $43 million deficit. And that's not to say that we don't take responsibility. We have to take some level of responsibility for where we're at. But I also believe that we can get ourselves out of it. I believe that we can work together with the staff, I think we can work together with community, and I absolutely think we can work together to get ourselves not only out of here, but put ourselves in a financially safe position so that we can continue to provide the services we need to provide for our students. And we hope that you have that trust in us, that we'll get, we'll get ourselves there, we'll get the community there. I don't think it's an insurmountable amount, but I also think it's going to take tough conversations. And, you know, from this perspective, as the President of the Board, I will do what I need to do to hopefully get us all in the spaces that we need to get to so that we can have the tough conversations and bring community in as needed to help us right some of these wrongs and get our school district back on track and make sure we are seeing the improvements, that we continue to have lower class sizes, that we continue to see improvements in our testing scores that we have seen, and our graduation rates, which are higher than they ever were. So that's it. I just want to call out the obvious elephant in the room, whatever you want to call it, and approach it head-on, and look forward to having all of your support as we figure our way out of this and work together to improve our district. Thank you. So with that, I'll pass it over to our Board Members if anyone else has anything to add today. Member Rivera.
I don't know how I'm supposed to follow that, but I just wanted to share. So in light of continuing the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, I wanted to share today something, so last week, I was on a panel, I was on a panel discussion to bring voice, Hispanic or Latina voice, to this discussion. And I don't want to go into detail of it because it was a private, but it was a very humbling and rewarding experience. Now, in this conversation, there was a quote that came up by another person that was on this panel with me, and it really left me reflecting, and I was like, I have to share this. Because in Mexican culture, we love, like, little sayings. It's like huge in our culture. But one of them, that's really famous, is that, that I heard ever since I was growing up, and I still continue to hear now, is "Calladita, te ves mas bonita." And that translates to, "You look prettier with your mouth shut." And so that, it's, it's something we can laugh about culturally, but realistically, it's really something that I'm not okay with, and so I'm glad that I was able to dialogue that on the panel, but I want to say that that is a message that says silence is more aesthetically pleasing than your voice. And this is discouraging us, and when I say us, I mean Latinas or those who identify as she/her/ea, like I do. It is discouraging us from taking up the spaces in the professional and political world. And so that's why I want to bring light to this. Now, as I dug deeper into this discussion and looked at research and saw some pretty cool research around voting statistics in the recent elections, Latinas hold a pretty, pretty powerful place, and the numbers just continue to rise. So I want to encourage you all to look, look up the California Civic Engagement Project, and they had a research study that came out in 2016, and I'm just going to reference some stuff really quickly. It shared in here that for the last two decades, Latinos have accounted for nearly a quarter of all voters in the U.S. And in the same statement, it says that 8 million of the 32.5 million were new voters. But the key driver of this was the increase that was in the growth of Latino voters and how they consistently had higher rates of turnout than Latino men. And then I looked even deeper at the California data, and I was just blown away. And so I'm not going to sit here and tell you all of that data, I'm going to encourage you to look it up. But I share all of that to say that that powerful statement told me that not only do I not look prettier when my mouth is open and speaking, but that we hold a powerful voice. Now, I'm going to go even deeper to say that if you look at social media, right, and you, you know, we're all hearing, "Who's headlining for the NFL?" And I'm like, this has got to be a power move, and I looked into it. I encourage you all to look at the billions of dollars Latinos spend. Billions. And that, I want our young, our young students to hear, especially those who hold leadership roles. That tells me that the people that are out there running the media know who the giant is. And so let's run with that and continue to use our voices and to not hold up to the "Calladita, te ves mas bonita." Now, with that said, I also want to share that I think I demonstrated that in our last Board meeting when I shared some pretty deep stuff about myself. I want to share that I have good updates, I was able to serve a restraining order. But I share that because, thank you, thank you, I share that because there was a nonprofit organization that was extremely helpful in this process, and I want to make sure that as many students and families and staff members are aware of this resource. It's called the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center, and it's right across from the family courts if you ever have gone there for any reason, and if you've never been there, you'll know that it's across the way. They helped me incredibly, but they helped many folks with all of the things that you just don't even know you have to go through for any kind of situation in the court. So shout out to them for their amazing help in this situation, but also look to them for resources if you need them. And lastly, as I, I want to close on the note of Hispanic Heritage Month, I want to say Free Palestine because Mexican culture has been really strong in their solidarity, and I identify as Mexican-American, so Free Palestine.
Thank you, Member Rivera. Any other speakers from our Board? Member Rhodes.
Yes, I'll be quick. First off, I look forward to seeing the primo bad money in the Super Bowl II, just want to say. But I want to speak about this weekend, we have at John Morris Therapeutic, we have a community cleanup of the garden starting at 11 o'clock. So if you guys are able to come, that'd be great. Local Rotary Club has donated all kinds of things to help us fix it, and the local church is coming along with students and families to clean up the garden there. And then, lastly, as a point of privilege, tomorrow's my daughter's birthday. My daughter, Rosa Maria Itzel Rhodes. She's, and so, happy birthday, happy 10th birthday to you, preciosa. We're going to have a great time tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rhodes. All right, seeing other comments, we will move on to item 10.1. All right, 10.1, recognition of Filipino-American History Month. So, it's a couple of things to say here. So we're celebrating Filipino-American History Month, it's October, to commemorate the first recorded presence of Filipinos in the United States, which happened right here in California in Morro Bay on October 18th. Filipino-Americans are the third-largest ethnic group in California and an important part of the diversity that makes SAC City Unified so unique. I encourage our community to celebrate Filipino culture by visiting the Jose Rizal Community Center, which was named in honor of a Filipino nationalist whose writing sparked the Philippine Revolution from colonial Spanish rule. The center opened in the South Gate area in 1983 to serve our local Filipino community, and now hosts the annual Filipino Fiesta in June. Also, to learn more about Filipino history, I would like to acknowledge the work of the South Gate Library for their efforts to preserve a section of their books dedicated to the Philippines and Filipino-Americans. SAC City Unified recognizes and acknowledges the Filipino-Americans who, for their significant contributions to our country and our school district, and I would like to take this opportunity to welcome our staff members here up to the dais, so we can have Glenny, who's our Youth Engagement Coordinator, come on up, and also Sean, who is our District Marketing Specialist, to come on up. And I just want to give a shout-out to Dr. Mark Canaro, who is not here today but would have been up here, celebrating with us tonight. Thank you all for everything that you do, you know, Sean for the photography and branding, and Glenn for everything, Glenny, everything that you do. I would love for y'all to kind of talk about, maybe just talk about what you do a little bit, and just maybe what this month means to you, and, and thank you for coming tonight.
Magandang umaga, or magandang gabay, which means "good evening" in Tagalog. I am Glenelyn Kenery, I go by Glenny, I am the Youth Development Coordinator of Youth Development. I have been here and served our students for over 12 years. I have worked many different positions in the expanded learning space, one as in nonprofit spaces, as well as youth service specialist, specialist, and now as a coordinator. And it's an honor to be represented today as a Filipino-American, also to be standing with my young boys. I have two here, one back there that's super shy, but it's just an honor. Anytime I can represent my Filipino culture, it means so much. Growing up, little Glenny didn't get to see herself in this field, on TV, as an advocate, so it is my every goal to continue to be an advocate for our young people. So thank you for honoring the Filipino culture, appreciate it.
I am Sean Brainerd, Marketing Specialist for the district, and I, I, I with the rest of our Communications Department, try and put our, put our best foot forward for the district and make sure that we're communicating everything internally and externally with our constituents. And I just wanted to say, thank you very much for acknowledging this day and this month. It's important to us. I sometimes don't feel like the Filipino culture gets quite enough, you know, critical mass when it, when it, when it comes to acknowledgement, and I want to appreciate, say that I appreciate what you guys are doing. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, before y'all go, I want to see if any of our Board Members have anything to add. If not, we're going to come down and take a photo. Flip it on you. All right, 10.2, recognition of the Week of the School Administrator.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Allen, and members of the Board. We're here tonight to recognize the Week of the School Administrator, which will be celebrated next week, October 18th. the week of the school administrator, which will be celebrated next week, October 12th through, uh, the 18th.
School administrators week is an opportunity for the district to recognize and acknowledge the administrators who support the students, staff, and community in support of student success.
Great schools are led by great administrators and great districts are led by great district office leadership and superintendents. And we absolutely have that in Saks City here in, uh, Spain.
We extend special recognition to our school site administrators who work tirelessly each day to support students, staff, and families. Their leadership, compassion, and commitment are the heart of student success. Please join me in a round of applause for our school administrators and all of our district administrators. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we, uh, have any comment? Thank you. I didn't even ask for a last one, my bad. Any other board members? I'll say something. Um, thank you. I, I was just telling Superintendent Allen that it's we're supposed to be celebrating you and you're presenting on your own celebration. So I want to recognize you all for the very difficult job um, that you all do. I know it's not easy and I know that you feel a lot of the concerns, questions, and comments that come from our community. And oftentimes folks are seeking answers from you and we always have the answers that folks want to hear. And I know that's very difficult. So I want to appreciate you for the really difficult job that you do have. And we appreciate you feeling those questions and and really helping our communities move forward, even in the toughest times. So I really do mean that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And, uh, I'd like to add, we have the best jobs because the best part of our days is to be out at the school sites. Work, we're working with the teachers, the admin, and especially the students. So yeah, we wouldn't trade this job for anything.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Member Benjamin.
Yeah, I, I just, uh, want to echo, uh, President Singh, uh, you know, um, and thank you all, you know, because a lot of times what happens is that if there is something that needs to be addressed or there is a complaint, it always starts at the top, right? And so they go looking for that, that lead admin or whatever it is. And, you know, a lot of times you have to have answers before answers are needed. And, and so it's a, it's a situation where, you know, your, your, your oversight um, is invaluable. And I, I just want to say thank you. That's all.
Thank you, guys. I'm gonna call him. All right, um, recognition of National School Lunch Week. Welcome back, Member Rhodes.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, and Superintendent Allen. I am Diana Flores, Executive Director of School Nutrition, Central Kitchen, and Distribution Services. And we have some special guests with me today. Um, I've come here many times alone to speak to you on National School Lunch Week, which is next week. But this year was special to our department. In 2012, we passed a bond for our central kitchen. And 13 years later, half of our menu is freshly prepared. It took a lot of hard work and a lot of people to get there. It was not me. They represent our team of 350 employees that did great work during COVID, which got us behind, um, in the central kitchen. But we moved forward the last few years and especially this year. So we're super proud. I'm not going to do a bunch of talking points. I'm going to share it with you tonight. So hit it.
We're here today in the central kitchen making our very first batch of the roasted toski salsa for you. We have roasted onions, tomatoes, tomateos, and jalapenos. This is over 1,500 pounds of nutritious, delicious, fresh farm-to-table vegetables. Um, after we roast everything, we put it in our kettle. It's a 260 gallon kettle. And we cook it, bag it, send it to your schools, and we end up making 10,000 servings of salsa. And this is an egg bite. 1,208 bites going for the school size for breakfast.
Oh, man. It's buffering. It'll get there. I know, huh? Why do these things always happen at the board meeting? What I could say while, oh, is it working?
Yes.
What I could say while it's buffering, um, is that we are currently serving about a half a million meals fresh out of the central kitchen. And what I see when I watch this video, and I hope it works tonight for us, is I knew all along that our team has a lot of pride in the work they do. But now they have a lot of pride in the food. And it's really changed, um, everything in our program. And I'm super excited to see what the students feel about it. And we are launching a big survey to get feedback from students and families. So we're really excited about doing that. But I hope you get to watch the rest of this video. Um, National School Lunch Week is next week and, um, we've made this presentation about recognizing our people, um, not just the food. So that's what I have to share today. And I don't know if the video is going to work for you.
Yes. Thank you all so much. We really appreciate this. I'm going to see if folks have comments. Member Kaya, go ahead. Uh, do we have any public comment? Okay.
Okay, I want to watch the rest of that video. I would say this should be on the scroll because this would be a cool recap of our meeting. So something, I'm not sure if most people are aware, but I think, what was it like? Five years ago now, there was some, you know, public pushback about the board sitting around here eating catered food. Um, they called it eating good at the Sarna Center. And so the previous board stopped buying food from the outside and started bringing, for the most part, central kitchen food in. And we are able to try a lot of what you make and I think in some cases get some new samples that aren't with the kids yet. And I would say it's Should I do, should I finish or are we gonna? Okay. I, I want to get back to that egg bite. But it is, I don't think there's many places in the country or even California where a group of adults are going to sit around and say that the best meal we've had that week was the one served by the central kitchen. And to then go to our kids and say, I know that's new for you, but you got to try that because it's going to be good. Um, and to mean it. And for us who've tried it, we mean it. So I just want to shout out, you know, this is not just better school food. This is good food, period. And I really think your team had to prepare it on the scale you do. Um, just hats off. And let's get back to watching those egg bites.
Before we press play, let's just let it buffer. So why don't we finish the other comments and then we'll try to press play. So, uh, Member Rivera. Yes.
A bunch to say, but I do want to say that your work definitely shows. Um, and I, I shared with some of the board that last week, my daughter came home really excited about the chicken Alfredo pasta, stuff y'all got on the menu. And she switched schools from last year to this year. So she thought that the cafeteria folks at her new school were just getting down in the kitchen. That's how she told me. But really, I told her that you guys just have this incredible stuff that you're rolling out and she's going to see it little by little. So a high school student coming home and talking like that is not something you hear very often. But I also want to highlight something else that I really appreciate about what you guys have been doing in this rollout of the new menu items. And culturally, across all cultures, breaking bread is really just an important moment. And we are such a culturally diverse district. And, um, I think that it's beautiful how you've incorporated that in the menu in a way that you're experiencing new flavors. Like we tried the curry recently, tofu and chicken curry. And oh my gosh, you blow me away. Because I got the, like, I know it sounds crazy. I'm talking about curry, right? But curry is such a, it's such a strong flavor. And you mastered a way to do it, that it was soft on a palate where a kid can confidently share their culture with another student and give them that experience and it be tolerable and something they can talk about. And really like break bread over. And I think that that's the most beautiful piece. And you've incorporated that. And I can see just by the pride that you, your face was glowing as you talked about your team and they were equally glowing. So that just goes to show that it is truly being poured in from the out in. So thank you for this because this food change is going to create a really big difference for kids in big ways that you don't even realize. And I know that you probably might realize it. That's why you work in what you work in, but you don't hear it often. So that's why I wanted to say it. So thank you for all of your hard work in feeding us and the kids.
Thank you. Um, Member Rhodes?
Yes, um, I think it's fitting that, uh, it stopped at the, at the, um, egg bites because when they came up on the screen, we were actually talking about, oh yeah, those are the egg bites from the Westman colony. And so, yeah, yeah, it's also, so like, and then it stopped. And it was like, oh, maybe it was our fault that it happened. But yeah, no, a hundred percent. Uh, my son also, my son Santiago also speaks about your chicken Alfredo. Uh, another high school student. It's FYI. Uh, Santiago, uh, enjoys your chicken Alfredo for sure. Um, and then I would, I would just say the, the biggest thing, uh, for me, when you talk about um, people doing work for our students, um, is actually you brought the team up, right? And, and, and the team are, are people who are our neighbors. And I, as one of your team members here, I remember being at the laundry mat, uh, behind AMP and washing my clothes when her and her daughter were washing clothes. Literally, uh, they are our neighbors that live in our neighborhoods. And you're bringing them up and, and giving them their due. Um, you guys are doing God's work. Um, I appreciate, uh, everything you do, um, but also the staff. You guys are feeding our students that sometimes don't have food. And, and so we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Rhodes. Member Benjamin.
I'm gonna be real fast too. And I would just want to say thank you. Um, you know, this addresses another issue for a lot of our kids from marginalized communities. This is sometimes their only meal. And so to have it, this much care and concern put into it means a whole lot. I'm curious to see how this affects behaviors and performance in schools, right? When they can come and get sustenance. Uh, we went to a, a processed, I think, easy way out kind of feeding system in these last 10 to 15 years. And we would see, um, I think, I think you would see that reflected in kind of behaviors and, and a performance because these, these, these foods that are high in in high fructose and things of that nature. And also think that this aligns with who we are as a city, right? We farm the fork. Everything we need is 30 minutes away, right? To put inside of, of food. Um, and hey, listen. I eat it. So I, I know, I, I'm super critical. And I think that it's something in the name. And to call yourselves the central kitchen, uh, and put yourselves right at the central point of, of how we're serving our students, I think is important. And I want to thank you. Uh, and I, you're doing a really good job. Oh, he wants a central kitchen jacket. It is nice.
Okay, we can, um, you can get him, you can get them jackets. It's fine. I, I'm just gonna add a couple of real quick things, which is, um, it is great to see the type of food that our students are getting. Uh, as much as it's, uh, nostalgic to remember the food we ate in high school, but that stuff was that was just like dried up bread with beef patties and, and like a very sad piece of lettuce. Um, but that's what we all ate. And I know that for a fact. But here we are today and our, our kids are, are getting fed. And Chinon kind of said this, uh, you're doing God's work. And I want to, I, I can't help but think about it. In my community in the Sikh faith, um, we provide free food to anyone who walks through our doors around the world. Um, and we don't look at who someone is, what faith they come from, sex, gender, and honestly, at the same place in our school district, you all do that. You feed everyone. Any kid who needs a meal, you give them a meal. We give people meals. When school is out, we make sure kids are getting meals during breaks, during the holiday breaks, whichever holidays they're celebrating. We're out there. You all are out there providing meals, right? In times of need. And, um, not to make it political, but it is, but this is the type of stuff that this federal government wants to take away. They want to take away the ability for our children to eat because eating leads to, as, as we talked about, it says sustenance, right? How are you going to go to school and learn if you're hungry? And we can't let our kids go hungry. And we just appreciate everything that you all do, honestly. So with that, we're gonna try to press play one more time. Maybe.
Today we're gonna make beef polines and seasoned ground beef. And my friend Mary is gonna explain to you about the process.
Hi, everybody. Today in the central kitchen, we're making our beef polines. Um, this goes on our pasta in the schools. We make about 300 or sorry, 3,500 servings from this batch. We start with fresh roasted tomatoes that we crush. We add, uh, fresh onion, fresh celery, fresh garlic. We mix it up in here and then we pump it out and send it out to you nice and fresh. Hello. And right here we have our seasoned ground beef. We have a total of 4,500 servings per kettle. Monthly between the both of these, we will pop out about 70,000 servings to send out to all the school sites. Um, after we have been making it, it goes through our pump, which will come up here and then we make five pound bags. As soon as they're done pumping out, they're put through this conveyor belt up into the top conveyor belt and drop into what we like to call our still tank. That will bring it down to temperature safely. Um, once it gets to a temperature of below 48 degrees, right, we'll take it out, put it in, uh, crates and send it off to school sites.
Hi, today we're routing 348 units of the seasoned ground beef.
He's loading up freshly prepared meals from central kitchen, uh, for the suppers. And then today's menu is going to be freshly ground beef. Uh, prepared for a ta, uh, seasoned beef for tacos, all coming from the central kitchen. Everything is down stacked accordingly. Everything is delivered fresh, um, so that they can serve the following day for this product. It's a well-oiled machine. This is just one of nine routes. All nine guys are on the truck loading up as they go on right now. So, uh, it's going to be a great day. Hope you enjoy your food.
I just picked up our shipment of 400 heads of lettuce from Soilborne Farms. And so we're gonna get it offloaded. So we're gonna take it over to the central kitchen team so they can process it and prepare it to get shipped out to our school site. And now it's ready to be processed by our central kitchen team.
Hey, today here at central kitchen, we're doing soilborne lettuce. We're doing romaine lettuce. Romaine lettuce will come from one of our local, uh, farms, uh, in the metro Corudiva. We get about 500 heads of lettuce every week, every birthday. We, uh, process our lettuce by, uh, filling the head off. And then put in all that lettuce into the veggie wash. We wash it. And then we drain it, we drain it, we dry it. And then the next box is cutting the lettuce. So we chop the lettuce. We get it again ready, we wash it again in our veggie wash, our second wash. For our veggie lettuce, we dry it and then put it You can see that they go into that, uh, conveyor lane in one pound bags. We do about 100, uh, 157 bags of lettuce, which is a total of We do about 100, uh, 157 bags of lettuce, which is a total of 2,300 servings, and that goes out to our elementarys every day at the South Park. Uh, it will be served on Wednesday, so this lettuce goes out tomorrow, and it's served the next day. So freshly prepared.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Don't give him a jacket. Uh, Community Schools update.
It's a little high there. All right, we're ready. Good evening Superintendent Allen, President Singh, and our fabulous board. My name is Sarah Lint B. Invenue, and I serve as the District Community Schools Specialist. Tonight, I am joined by my incredible and passionate specialist. We're here to share our highlights, accomplishments, insights, and identified areas of growth from the 24-25 school year. To give you an analogy of our journey, we began in a canoe, spent a little time on a roller coaster, and last year, we were flying a plane while building it. This year, we are piloting a rocket. Please enjoy our presentation, and we look forward to answering your questions. Just don't beat us up. Too bad.
Oh, here's our agenda.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Derr Sparks from Ethel Baker Elementary, and I represent Area 1 at CSAC. Our district was awarded more than $25 million in state implementation funds. 24-25 was our first year of full implementation. The funds have allowed us to do many incredible things. Hire specialists, plus more, experience professional learning, partner with local organizations to expand opportunities for our students and families. Provide enriching experience for our students, including field trips, guest speakers, mobile museums, and assemblies, and host more than 300 family engagement events at our 18 schools.
Good evening. My name is Megan Molina, and I'm the Community School Specialist at Rosa Parks K-8. Community schools take on a whole child, whole community, and relationship-centered approach to learning. They leverage the expertise and assets of students, families, school staff, and community partners to build supportive and equitable school communities, where learning is culturally rooted, inclusive, rigorous, and relevant. The community school model is a mindset, meaning that every school can become a community school.
Hi, I'm Kim Rodriguez at Saylor Chavez. We have four pillars at community schools, which are integrated student and family supports, family engagement, collaborative leadership, expanded learning time and opportunities. We also have four key values, which is working towards transformational improvement, every voice matters, fostering trust, and students at the heart of our work.
Good evening. My name is Tanea Donker. I am the Community School Specialist at John Bidwell Elementary. Um, collaborative leadership. Collaborative leadership in community schools shifts mindsets from a top-down approach to a co-design leadership, where families and community members are not passive recipients. Collaborative leadership in community schools steps away from the status quo of a deficit mindset to a growth mindset. The payoff is empowerment of our families, staff, and students to have a say in the decision-making process. Lastly, collaborative leadership comes in the form of parent organizations, student leadership groups like student councils, professional learning communities, PLCs, among teachers and subcommittees that support administrators.
They do such a better job. We, the meat of our work last year was really around collecting data and listening. Let me get my notes here, so I can, sorry. Last year, our focus was on building deep relationships and trust with our families, students, staff, and community partners. We did this by listening, talking less and listening more. Collectively, we listened to over 8,000 voices across our 17 school sites. The assets and needs varied from site to site. These, this is reflected in our site-specific infographs, which are presented in our gallery walk for you this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Katie Burns from John Still TK8. So as we reviewed data, every school had qualities that were very unique, and assets that were very unique. But what you'll see on the screen here are some commonalities among our 18 community schools. So first and foremost, as we were reviewing data, we found that our community members, families, students, and staff had a sense of hope around the work that the community schools specialists were doing. Lot of excitement. Uh, we heard a lot of positive feedback, um, from our community, that the principals, teachers, and school staff were mentioned as a source of strength within our community schools, as were the partnerships that we were beginning to build with families, community partners, and students. Uh, we got a lot of positive feedback from the cafeteria staff, and especially, our students love the Crispitos. Uh, student support centers were highly valued, uh, as they provide access to mental health services that are so important for our students and families. A lot of kudos for the after-school programs, and positive feedback regarding access to art lessons and displays of student artwork.
Good evening. I'm Liz Aguita from Ethel Phillips.
Martine Ramirez, Earl Warren.
We're here to talk about the street data that we've collected. That's what makes our community schools different, is that we're listening to the voices of our parents, our students, our community members. And of the data collected, they've informed us they want to see more cultural events, more community and educational events happening at our school sites. They want to see clean and safe restrooms and drinking fountains. Our students want more access to field trips, so that it's equitable, equitable across campuses. And our students also want to see more sports opportunities across all grade levels.
When I started this, good afternoon. Through the, the street data that we, we collected, um, in addition to these that were mentioned, our students also want to see opportunities on our campuses, at our schools, right, that apply to life after high school, as they've envisioned their own journey. You know, how, how do we make that content relevant, especially in today's economy? Like IA, AI. Uh, more open libraries during lunch, after lunch, uh, after school, in the morning. Uh, age-appropriate books in the classrooms, uh, school beautification projects, our gardens, plants in the, in the classroom, art on the walls, that are culturally relevant, right? So they can be inspired. You know, being able to sit in the main office, make it, you know, welcoming. Uh, open windows, for example. And finally, uh, include more culturally, uh, familiar foods, as was mentioned earlier in the, the previous presentation, right? So we are on the move with that. In fact, I gotta give a shout-out to, uh, Diana Flores for her leadership. Uh, she's been very receptive from the beginning that we invited her. She came to, uh, to present to us, and she, she's been really, uh, has provided some of that street data, right, that, that we have, and we have exchanged that. Uh, finally, uh, just want to say that our students are, they want, we want, they want, we want us to bring back chicken wings. You know, they want, they want those chicken wings, so just want to make a note of that. Uh, that was, that was highly mentioned. And finally, uh, more project-based learning opportunities, which I know that we're already doing that, so, thank you. Up next is our colleague.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Graves, the Community School Specialist at Parkway Elementary. In terms of the impact of community schools over the past year, we've been able to recruit 163 new parent volunteers. We've hosted over 300 events across 18 sites. We've created a new partnership, or new partnerships, and strengthened existing, existing partnerships. We've increased communication going out to families using Parents Square and Infinite Campus. We've created more opportunities for students to participate in expanded learning and enriching, or enriched learning opportunities. We've also increased collaborative leadership by amplifying the voices of stakeholder groups. We've empowered and uplifted student, family, and staff voices with listening sessions, interviews, and surveys. We've partnered with Charles A. Jones Education Center to bring ESL classes to our parents at the community school sites. And lastly, we've received close to 820,000, or I'm sorry, $820,000 in donations over the 24-25 school year. Thank you.
Lessons learned. How you doing? Uh, good evening. Juan Martinez, Pacific Elementary. We've learned that there are many unnecessary systems that have faced a complicity, that have created barriers that lead to, to schools in our community having lower participation rates, less opportunities for students, et cetera. Uh, I think we probably would need a, a night just to talk about a lot of disparities that are happening in that are within our schools. Uh, these systems must be simplified, dismantled, and rebuilt for the population we serve. Our communities are living in a complexity tax that keeps them from accessing all that we have to offer.
As community schools, we are working to build a transformational system that breaks away from traditional and transactional education. One that provides real opportunities, that empowers our students well after graduation. It will not happen overnight, and requires partnerships with every level of the school system and district offices. Community schools' transformation is a team effort.
And finally, thinking about our next steps, as we think about the rocket shift that Sarah Lynn was mentioning, uh, these are our tasks this year, focusing on strategic leadership and clear communication. Uh, we want to champion how community schools align with the district's vision, and engage all of our stakeholders in this process. We want to focus on academics, so shifting from entertainment community events to edutainment community events that emphasize, um, scholarship and academics, which can be a lot of fun and very engaging. Uh, we want to lift student agency through increased project-based learning opportunities, and then sustain the vision through, uh, transitions. So build an emergency, build on our emergency, emerging, build on our emerging, emerge, how come I can't say that word? Emerging community partnerships that have formed over the past year, center the voices of students, families, and staff, so that they're all active participants. Establishing PTAs and PTOs, uh, and strengthening our ELAC and, um, uh, school site council across the community school sites. Uh, build staff collective efficacy to positively impact student learning and outcomes, and then also prioritize leadership that builds student-centered learning and strong family and community partnerships. Thank you.
I like how we can take suggestions from other kids, and we can, and we can actually get them made.
Also, just parent environment, it's really cool to see parents here on campus and, you know, wanting to do something. Well, I feel like, um, having teachers there, you know, like from different grade levels, and also people from the community, and everyone there, and even the student rep, is pretty cool, because we all get to, get to see what the needs of the school is, and then we talk about it, and then we see how we can, um, go about that. Because, um, before, we've never asked, um, parents or students, you know, what they saw as a need, so now we're really focusing on what the school needs.
Um, I felt like having been in a community school has impacted, um, keeping us, parents, students involved, uh, everything that happens in the school. Every week, you get a new, uh, weekly letter letting you know what's going on during maybe the week, or even the month, as, as, uh, as the weeks are going by, and I really like that. It keeps you. Um, it has impacted him to, um, really feel, um, motivated, because he felt like, Mom, this is gonna be a big impact, maybe as I get older, and I want to go like, um, like to be a leader.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us go over. We practiced many times. You've had this ready since May.
Thank you. Brian, do you have any public comment?
We do have one speaker, Amy De La Sal.
Thank you. Good evening. In regard to community schools, I would just like to encourage the board to look at academic accountability, look at student growth in academics, look at proficiency and moving forward. I've seen a lot of, um, and this isn't just for our community schools, but this is something that came up for me when we got the, what is it, $25 million for our community schools. Um, we need to be looking at academics. That's the baseline of what we need to be serving students, and I'm particularly interested in literacy scores. All of our students need to learn to read. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the board? Member Ibada, go ahead.
Thank you for that incredible report out. So fun to see all of the great work that you all are doing. The comments I'm about to make is for the board. I, I know that right now we're facing a lot of decisions that we're gonna have to make as we move forward with our challenges financially, but I want us to really pause and take a moment to look at the work and reflect on what was just shared with us. Because part of the LCAP, a big component of the LCAP is, is, uh, family and community engagement. And we heard some commentary from, I believe it was Terrence, earlier tonight, on refocusing on where we're highlighting the voice of that. Now, I say that because community schools are five-year grants. This money is not forever, right? And that's probably the elephant in the room right now. But what I also note is that I went, my daughters were at Oak Ridge, they were at, um, a school who was under a site improvement grant that also is a five-year money. And at the end of those five years, I was on site council and had to make some pretty tough decisions. Probably one of the tough, toughest votes I've ever had on a site council, ever. I mean, there was tears, not just for me, at the end of that. But I share that because that is what we are going to face as a board, when, when the decisions come. So I want us to really pay attention to what is being done here, and the impact that it has, not just on our community, but on the LCAP, and the systems that we have in place for how we listen to community, and what their needs are. So I just want you all to reflect on that, as you've taken this information in from them, and as we move into this space of, uh, as a board together on the decision-making process that we're gonna have to go through. So those are my comments for this evening. And again, thank you all for the incredible work that you have been doing. I apologize that I don't have a representative yet. I was this close to getting my oldest daughter to do it, but she had an internship opportunity, and so now I'm trying to fill that position. So I am trying to get it there. That was a great idea, Sarah Lynn, by the way. We almost had her. We almost had her. But thank you for all of your work.
Thank you. Member Rhodes?
I, I just wanted to say that, um, two things you guys pointed out tonight. Um, you guys pointed out to my childhood favorite, Crispitos. Um, growing Growing up here in the district at Bret Hart Elementary School and things. So Crispitos, god-tier food for elementary schools. And then also, I also agree that you guys should bring back chicken wings. So to my people in the back, and I know that, see if she's still back there. Bring back the chicken wings, our student wants it. We demand it, chicken wings for all. Now, on to, actually, to what I really want to say. You guys are doing amazing work. I get to work relatively closely with the Area 5 community schools folks and I get to see what you guys are doing on the ground floor, the impact and how we've been able to enhance and advance the community work that we do in the south side of the city. And that's a beautiful thing. And I know that Member Ibada was talking about cuts and things like that. I find the work you guys do essential to what we do here at the district and connecting with our communities, communities that have been left on the margins for generations. And we are slowly reeling them back in, but it's the consistency part. I often talk to people about these pillars. I always have the community, character, consistency, and culture. But oftentimes, we miss the consistency part. We put a Band-Aid and we leave it. We have to figure out ways to continually and consistently show up for people who have not been showed up for by systems. And just remind the board that we don't represent schools necessarily. We represent how those schools and systems impact the neighborhoods that we are representing. We represent people. And so as we continue to push systems to do better, I want to let you guys know that you guys are a part of that and we need you for that change and we need to continue consistently change that you guys bring. So I just want to applaud you guys and say thank you for the work you're doing. And we have more work to do, always, but for what you guys have brought today and what you continue to do is amazing. So thank you so much. That's my time.
Thank you, Member Oz. Member Benjamin.
Yeah, so I'm going to be real, real quick. I'm looking at the list of schools and so I have four schools, four community schools. And it actually excites me because this is the crux of where I think the work is going to come from. What this allows us to do is to expand the walls, right, of the classroom and get inside the community. I had a really good opportunity to run, to work under Safe Schools here in the district. And what we did was, after we decided that, you know, no more SROs, we connected with CBOs from the community, right? And so what it did was it allowed us to bring community members onto the school campus, right? So then it connects outside of the schools and it made all the difference. You see where we're at, we won the Golden Bell Award, right? So I think in terms of the support, understanding that the funds aren't, you know, ongoing and permanent, I think this is the perfect conversation to have with the community and connect the community to the community school staff so then we can keep these things going. So I'm excited. I got a lot of kind of outdoor resources that I'm looking forward to connecting, not only to my schools, but to all the schools on the list. So thank you for all the work you do and I look forward to working with you.
Member Kayada, thank you.
So not a comment, more of a request. Feeling a little inspired by what Member Ibada said about, you know, the questions on whether this will be here. Hopefully, if there isn't a cliff, hopefully this does continue. But it does remind me that whether or not we have this, we should be learning something from it. To Member Benjamin's four schools, I have zero. And it is important for me to learn what's happening at these community schools, which aren't any of my schools, but what can I take back with me to them? And what can I have the IASs learn to bring back to the principals that don't have the funding right now for these grants, but are still? Not everything here requires money. Not everything here needs to have someone who's a dedicated person. Obviously, it'd be better if we had that. But I guess that was a really long way of saying, my ask is, you know, if you can let us know not just what's happening at the sites that are community schools, but what are you learning and what can we roll out wider? Both for the schools that don't have it yet and the schools that haven't really lose this money, how they would continue doing it in the future. But anyway, thank you very much for your work and I do really appreciate these updates.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to item 10.5, the first reading of board policies related to the Black Parallel School Board Action Plan. That's us.
All right. So the Policy Committee is bringing forward to you 18 policies for a first reading. Generally, when we do policies, we bring them for a first reading to get feedback and ideas from all of you. And then we go back and would do any revisions, updates for the second reading. And then generally, after a second, you approve, but you can push it to a third until we feel like the policies are finalized. As Board President Singh mentioned earlier, policy is one of the number-one priorities of our job, right? Like, we set policy. And board policy very largely collectively is the what we want to see happen and the why we want to see happen. And then admin regulations, which are the second layer of that, become the how it happens and who does it and the specifics of it. And our job is that larger what and why. These 18 policies are in line with the Black Parallel School Board Action Plan. So they've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes and I want to give a huge shout-out to all of our amazing folks that have been working with the Black Parallel School Board and just a huge grateful thank you to all of our folks on the Black Parallel School Board that have been doing this work and pushing for these conversations and bringing us these ideas. I don't have anything specific to share. It's more of an opening up the agenda so that we can hear from the community anything they want us, the board, to consider in these policies and what all of our other board colleagues are interested in seeing in them. The Policy Committee has already read through these and begun preliminary conversations and we're at the point where we want to hear from you and the community before we move into our next round of conversations for the second read.
Thank you, Member Jean. Go ahead, Member Kayada, to add on.
Member Kayada, and Member Jean and myself are on the Policy Committee, just to clarify why we're speaking.
Yes. So I just wanted to offer a little bit of clarification that Member Jean hinted at. For these particular policies, this is a small subset of the policies that the Policy Committee is looking at, but these are ones that were before us and we actually moved them up on the line because we have deadlines we need to meet for the settlement agreement with the Black Parallel School Board. And it is important for us to recognize the work and the recommendations that the BPSB brings before us and to make sure that we are running it through our own processes as well. So this truly is a first reading. We want to hear from people. I know there's been a request, there probably will be a request shortly, to delay our second reading for more time for community input and I am interested in that. I believe that is our plan. And in any case, I know a lot of us, all of us probably, have been to one of the BPSB policy discussions co-hosted with the district. And I want to make sure that people feel like they have ownership of this and we do seek to meet the goals and intentions of the settlement agreement by collaborating closely with the BPSB on these. But also, it doesn't end there. Just because a policy was one that was part of the settlement agreement doesn't mean that that's the only one we want input on. So keep track of all the policies that we're bringing up here, whether or not they have BPSB listed on the agenda or not.
Thank you, Member Kayada. And I'll just add quickly that what you said at the end, which is, this committee is trying to move us in a steadfast direction as quickly as possible, not only to address the many suggestions from BPSB and the settlement plan, but also in general, just our outdated policies in this district and the importance of keeping up. We've done, in my opinion, a tremendous job showing up in the moment, but we also have a huge task ahead of us of updating our policies, some of which are so old that we probably don't even follow, to be very honest, especially things around dress code and other issues to make sure that our district is inclusive of all our community members. So with that, I'm actually going to see if we have any public comment first.
We do. We have four, five speakers. We have Carl Pinkston, followed by Angeline Baker and Marion Bryson.
Thank you.
Good evening. President Singh and Superintendent Allen, it's a pleasure and an honor to be here today to speak on the board policy. As you well know, our efforts to revise, you know, efforts in our participation to revise the board policy that was indicated in the action plan was due on September 1st, 2024, and we didn't meet that mark. But the district, along with the independent monitor, proposed a new revised mapping of policy to the board for the first reading by today and final adoption by October 16th, 2025. And as you aware and stated, 18 board policy revision will require parents and community to review and provide comments within a reasonable timeframe. Two weeks is not adequate amount of time. We should be able to allow various groups, like the Community Advisory Committee, other community groups, to be able to have input and think through what exactly what's in the policy and what should be included. I was also thinking just before I got up here, I don't know if it's never been done before, but we might need to translate those policy into Spanish, into other language because policies are guardrails and it is the basis upon which administrative regulations and how the district will operate. So I think it would be an opportunity to do this that is consistent. And lastly, that I want to say really quickly is one piece that speaks to the willful defiance that was referred in one of the policy as it relates to discipline. As you well know, we do not suspend students for willful defiance anymore, even though it was noted that for eighth through 12th grade, that will expire in 2029. We, Black Parallel School Board, along with Fixed School Discipline Policy Coalition, will go back to the legislature and have it made permit. But all the other districts have already done this and our district from the previous board has already made a commitment to say we will not suspend kids for willful defiance. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So good evening, trustees, superintendent, and our brave student board member. My name is Angeline Baker and I am the Program Manager with the Black Child Legacy Campaign, Fruit Ridge Stockton Community Incubator Lead. I work daily with families, students, and students who are directly affected by district policies. So I know how critical your decisions are. Tonight, I ask you to support the Black Parallel School Board's action plan by postponing the adoption of the 18 board policies until the November 6th meeting. So parents and community members have time to review. As Carl said, removing willful defiance. Languages and suspensions for this reason are highly prohibited by law, requiring mandatory staff training on policies impacting students with disabilities and Black students, and upholding parents' rights to request and receive the highest quality support for students with disabilities. So, you know, to wrap up, this is about equity, justice, and dignity for our students. So please postpone, review carefully, and put students first. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, school board. And we want to thank you guys for all you guys' wonderful work you guys have been doing. I know this has been a challenging year for all of us. I'm Marion Bryson. I'm a parent organizer, parent advocate with the Black Parallel School Board. I'm the person that goes into the meetings, IUP, the 504 meetings, to support our parents and students with their issues and concerns. So we're really pleading with you guys to take the time and make sure we go through the action plan. And we demand that all staff receive mandatory training with policies and procedures, especially with our disability students and mostly our Black students. I think you guys all should go out to the school sites, take a special day and just go visit and see what's going on with our students because of the inappropriate training that our staff has at these school sites and the unprofessionalism that's there. I know it's a lot going on with hiring and staffing and, you know, having the right people on the campus, but we do need to have those right people on the campus. I'm on pretty much all of the campuses. I see what's going on. We have staff there and I love all of you guys and I love the work that you guys do. But we do have inadequate staff at our schools doing these things for our students. We have all of these separate contracts, these 504s with outside organizations, outside companies, outside procedures. They're in our schools taking over. They don't really care what's really going on. They're there for their purpose at that time. I've seen it. I've seen an outside agency come into a school and demand to have an office, their own office, their own space. They're not even seeing students. They're there to do paperwork or whatever, but they're demanding a space in our schools when there are outside agencies? What about the staff that's supposed to be there, that's supposed to be trained, that's supposed to be helping our teachers, helping our students and our students do their best? You know, what happened to excellence in school? And one thing I want you guys to think about, the staff that are there, these untrained, unprofessional staff that are helping our mostly students with disability and our Black students, they're there to control them. They're not there to teach them, they're not there to help them. I was at a classroom today doing observation. The aide that was there, she spent all the time trying to tell this kid what to do, how to do, how to say it. She did not let the teacher teach, she did not help him. She was a distraction for him. So please make sure we get the right people in our school sites, all of our school sites, that's there for our kids, to help our kids and do the best for our kids. Thank you guys for listening and it's always so glad and a blessing to be in you guys' space.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Sharon Thurmond, followed by Sue Simonelli and Amy De La Sal.
Good evening, everyone, and to our esteemed trustees, superintendent, our board president. Thank you for your service. It is a sacred public trust ensuring the education of thousands of children's lives who soon become adult leaders. My name is Sharon Thurmond. I'm here with my esteemed colleagues, Amy De La Sal and Carol Jackson. We're with the Sacramento County Education Coalition. We're here in support of the Black Parallel School Board's admonition, imploring you to be sure you allow more time for parents and community members to review and comment on the 18 board policies that are up for review. The items, I'm just going to pull a few. Special education staff, positive school climate, differential graduation and competency standards for students with disabilities. These are all intense subjects and very important for the community to provide thorough or have a thorough understanding and then provide thorough input. So for that reason and because it's obvious the court's ruling wanted to secure justice for these underserved, vulnerable children and to honor that, to honor the spirit of the court's ruling, we admonish you to delay until November 6th, the second reading, and if necessary, a third reading at a later time. The lives of these children are certainly worth it. Thank you very much for your time and for your service.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak. It's nice to see you all again. So my name is Sue Simonelli and tonight I'm here with my friends from the Black Parallel School Board, speaking on what, kind of recapping what people have already said. But currently, the district is supposed to be implementing an action plan with regard to the education of our students with disabilities. The rollout of the action plan has been kind of slow, but its intent is imperative. Students with disabilities have the right, under federal law, to a quality education. But in the past, hopefully not in the future, but in the past, Sac City Unified has failed them, particularly its Black students. A fundamental part of this mandate is the relationship between staff and students. And with that in mind, we demand that all necessary staff receive mandatory training and policy in policies and practices regarding students with disabilities, especially our black students. Thank you.
Hi again, Amy De La Sal. I'm here with a number of organizations in support of the Black Parallel School Board's settlement action plan. And yeah, it has been slow, and it sounds like we want more time to review these policies. But to bring a new point to this, I'm a parent that's been following this because I identify with a lot of the issues that have been brought up, and I'm really interested in systemic change, right? Permanent change that brings better services to students and results in better outcomes. When I went to the agenda tonight, I found the policies, but it really wasn't clear what was happening. So if you could put on the perspective of a parent who's interested in following this but not so into it that they have become part of the committee, I mean, that's a huge, huge commitment. I can't do it. So I appreciate that some of you commented on the beginning, what we're kind of doing here, but I didn't see redlining edits, and I also didn't know what the policy committees were after. So I think about root causes of some of the problems, and are we actually addressing something with the policy changes that we're suggesting? So basically, we can't even comment on these policies until we understand what the intention of the action plan was, if you're not an insider. So I think I'm asking you all, as our representatives, to kind of digest it for us and tell us, okay, we are trying to do these things with these changes on the policy. So we can offer comments to you. Thank you so much. So good evening.
No more public comment.
Thank you, Brian. So thank you for all the comments. I just want to state that I can confirm that we will be doing the second reading on November 6. So we hear you, there's already a conversation that was happening, and there's no formal vote that we need to take. We just want to make sure that you're all heard, and we'll definitely ensure that the community's heard and will move forward with additional conversations. I know your liaison, Mr. Benjamin, will continue those direct conversations with you at the Black Parallel School Board and continue having those conversations as well. So thank you.
Next up, we have our public hearing on approval resolution 3524, Compliance with the Pupil, Textbook, and Instructional Materials Incentive Act.
What's that? Good evening, board members and Superintendent Allen. I am Erin Finley, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and joining me is Tasha Weatherall, who is our one and only district librarian. And we love Tasha. So as we begin, we are here to share information about compliance with the Pupil, Textbook, and Instructional Materials Incentive Act. Tasha is going to describe what that is and what that means for our sites, but I just want to give a sort of pre-shout out to Tasha. We had an additional 13 sites this year who were added to the list that the county came and visited, and we were, because of Tasha's leadership and collaboration with our awesome team at Library Textbook Services and all of our site leaders who also had to verify textbook sufficiency, we are here tonight sharing some fantastic news on that. So thank you to Tasha and all of our folks who helped make this happen.
It always makes me nervous to stand up in front of adults. I was always good with kids, but adults make me very nervous. And I don't, do I just do the forward? Okay, you can just do the forward? Okay. I'm not going to read all of this because it's really not very interesting, but it is important to know that it is a, it is state of, it's a California state of education code that we, that schools have to check, the districts have to check the, that sites have curriculum available to all students all the time. So that's what, it's based on a legislation that was passed based on a lawsuit filed in Southern California. So if you're interested in all that information, it's all online, so keep on moving through that. So the purpose is to just determine if everybody has sufficient instructional materials, and in our district, we focus mostly on textbooks because we can't guarantee that every student in our district has access to Wi-Fi at home or to internet access. So while most of our curriculum does have an online component, we do ensure that there are textbooks available for all of our students in the four core areas. There's also a facilities component that I don't deal with, and then there's also teacher placements that they deal with that I also don't deal with. So that's what we do while we're there. So all the sites get a list of what we have available for them that's board-approved. They tell us what they need. I added on here that we had 36 sites this year to visit in a five-week, well, there's 36 total, 18 were new, and 18 were new to the list this year, so we had 13 more than last year because like seven dropped off. It was a lot of sites to visit, three hours every day for five weeks is where I spent my life the last five weeks. So, and the change came from some changes in reporting that happened, so we got more, the whole state had more sites to visit. Surplus textbooks and instructional materials were distributed, making sure that everybody had all their stuff. We checked in with a lot of new sites. And then SCOE sent reviewers, and myself or somebody from LTS went to every site visit to make sure that we had district representation at every site. And then the two small insufficiencies that we had, we were able to remedy within the same day, so it really didn't even mark as an insufficiency for us. These are the lists of the sites that I've spent my last five weeks at. The highlighted ones are the ones that are new to the list this year. Some of them have been on the list before, many of them have not. So you can see it was a lot of work. We typically had two high schools, Hiram Johnson and Imoja, and this year we had six. So five or six. So it was a, it was a big task this year. So we had 100% of all of our schools passed this year. Everybody had what they needed except for the two, and then we fixed those. And we also surveyed all the principals, and they all have what they need, so, and they all know that they can reach out to us anytime that they need anything. So, and then there's the amount of funds that we, that was spent and what we expect to spend next year with the new math adoption. So my recommend, I guess, do I read that? My recommendation, my recommendation is that you approve so that we can move on with my day, with our life, get back to my regular job.
Thank you.
I know, yay! All right. Any questions?
Brian, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Well, that concludes our public hearing. Do we have a board discussion?
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. I love your shirt.
It's, you know, people think it's like silly and that it's like not important, but I mean, those of us who've been in education long enough remember, like when I first started teaching, I taught in a class in this district that had 12 textbooks for me to share with 33 kids, right? That's why we do this, is that we go to make sure these, that our students have access to materials and that all students at all sites have the same access level. And so people think it's really like, oh, it's just this small thing, but it is really, really important to make sure that all of our students have the materials that they need, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
I know.
Yeah?
All right.
Do I have to do anything else? Is that it? Okay, all right.
I'm going to move. Do we have a second? Member Navarro, second student preferential vote.
Aye. Member Jean?
Aye.
Oh, my God. Member Kaara?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
I have no control over this board.
What's happening, Desi? What's happening?
I made a whole speech about being president, and this is what I got, so thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to Surplus Property 7-Eleven Committee for 5241 J Street. Welcome.
Good evening, President Singh, Superintendent Allen, board members. What a great way to end the evening. My name is Nathaniel Browning, and I'm here to recommend the creation of a 7-Eleven Committee to review the possible surplus of property located at 5241 J Street, also known as McClasky Adult Center. As always, we build around equity in everything we do here in facilities. So some quick background on McClasky. It originally opened as Eldorado Elementary School in 1921 with additions made in the 1930s, 40s, and 50s. The Eldorado School closed in 1974 due to not, no longer being field act compliant for K-12 students. In 1977, it opened as an adult ed school under the new name of A. Warren McClasky Adult Center. It served about 300 students at its peak in the 1980s, but now it's about 100 students served annually now. And in 2025, the site is largely underutilized with only about five classrooms being used for instruction at this time. Charles A. Jones can, is an adult ed center in the district and can easily absorb the program at McClasky. Also, over the past year, the site has received a lot of attention from the surrounding community. A group called Preservation Sacramento is working on placing a federal historic designation on the initially built facility. Also, I personally receive multiple calls on a regular basis from individuals hoping that we would sell it or wanting to buy it. There is a lot of interest in that community to find something else for that property. So timeline. Here's the proposed timeline for creating a 7-Eleven Committee, similar to what we created very recently in the spring of 2024. We will come back to the board for the approval of a 7 to 11 committee composition at the upcoming February 5th board meeting. As a quick reminder, under California law, the 7-Eleven Committee should, would be comprised of no less than seven, but no more than 11 members that represent seven different categories of individuals with various expertise in certain areas. We will create a proposed 7-Eleven Committee composition based on those legal requirements, but also keep a focus on finding potential membership from within that part of district surrounding the McClasky School. And with that, I would love to open it up for any questions.
Brian, do you have any public comment?
We do not.
Do you have any questions at the board up here? I have some questions. Oh, you do have a question? Go ahead.
Who decides who's on the 7-Eleven Committee, and how is the decision made?
The board ultimately decides who's on the 7-Eleven Committee. We will come ask for some input from each individual board member, similar as we did last time around. We do have some members from the previous 7-Eleven Committee that have also shown some interest that we might want to consider. I also know that the Director of Adult Education would be interested and would bring a wealth of knowledge and would also fit that category, one of the categories. But ultimately, we'll bring back a staff recommendation for committee members at the February 5th meeting, and the board would approve that membership.
Okay, I have another question. So the administrators from both sites will be part of the 7-Eleven Committee or only from the Adult Center?
It's actually one administrator that oversees both programs.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I'll save my questions offline. This is a beautiful building in my neck of the neighborhood, and I have been there multiple times toward it. It's beautiful, but I also completely understand the underutilization of it, and I just want to make sure that, that we're doing everything we can to, as we move folks over. I know that a lot of stuff that's housed there is students with needs and giving them the type of skill sets that they need to kind of thrive in this world. And, you know, there's a bus stop right in front of this location. I've seen a lot of folks utilize that. So my concern has always been if we're moving to a different site, that those students continue to have that access and that we're making sure that we go a little bit above and beyond to make sure those students with needs have access to the new Charles site and have whatever, whatever they've been used to. I think it's a big shift for them, and just making sure we do a little bit extra to make it easy for them to make that switch.
Absolutely. I have met with the Director of Adult Ed twice this week, two different times, and that was the main focus and intention. Either way, depending on where we end up with McClasky in the surplus process, they are focused on bringing that program to McCl, to CAJ, Charles A. Jones, no matter what. And so figuring out if there's any kind of supports that we need to improve that facility and make sure that they can continue the programs that they have without disruption.
Perfect. Thank you. I think we do need to take a vote on this as an action item to open a 7-Eleven Committee for this property, so we will start with our student preferential vote.
Aye. Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kaara?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Letting the community know that our future board meetings are October 16th, right here, and November 6th, right here. Oh, did she say a new time? And, 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 and?
Sorry.
Thank, thank, sorry, I'm just reading off my yellow booklet here and trying to stay on time. We'll be starting at 4:45, moving forward for our opening session, and then we will be starting our open session after that at 6:15 to give ourselves an hour and a half for closed session moving forward. So thank you all. With that, I will move to adjourn. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Thank you.